All right, call to order this regular meeting in the Beverly City Council, Monday, March 1st, 2021. Ms. Kent, could you please call the roll?
Ames? Here. Copeland?
Here.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Here.
Flowers?
Here.
Houseman?
Here.
Rand? Matando?
Yeah.
And Guanci.
I am here. Councilor Houseman, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
President. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor Houseman, gold star as usual. Let's move on to our script. Script for remotely conducted city council meetings, Monday, March 1st, 2021. And Ms. Kent has the smile emoji there for me, so I have to smile. Confirming member access. As a preliminary matter, this is Paul Guanci, President of the Beverly City Council. Before beginning the meeting, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by the City of Beverly and livestreamed by BevCam on both Channel 99 and via BevCam's YouTube channel. I hope that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda can hear me. Nod from all? Great. Introduction to remote meeting. Good evening. This open meeting of the Beverly City Council is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspended the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as adequate alternative public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting does have public participation. We have really, we have four, but really three, public hearings this evening. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised live, and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other participants or viewers may be able to see and hear you, and anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. You have the option to turn off your video if you're participating via computer. All participants should keep their microphones or phones muted unless recognized by me, the chair, to reduce background noise and feedback. Please wait until the person speaking is finished before speaking, so we can clearly hear all participants. In addition, because of the remote meeting, I'm going to read Rule 22 of the Rules and Regulations of the Beverly City Council. Rule 22, all subcommittees of the council shall cause records to be kept of their proceedings. They shall report by ordinance, order, or resolve unless otherwise provided by law. No subcommittee shall act by separate consultation, and no report of as a body shall be received unless agreed in subcommittee, actually notified and assembled for the purpose in hand, and signed by a majority of the councils of the subcommittee. As every subcommittee to which any subject matter may be referred shall report thereon as soon as possible after full consideration thereof and a vote thereof. However, if the council may by majority vote order any matter pending before a subcommittee to be acted upon, the subcommittee at its next meeting and/or be with forth returned to the full council. So all that means for people that are here for the first time is that rather than vote on things in committee, we're going to take a vote. We need six votes to allow all our votes to be taken by the full city council. We've been doing this since the beginning of April of 2020. So Ms. Kent, could you please call the roll?
Ames? Yes. Copeland?
Here.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Here.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Here.
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. Meeting ground rules for public hearings. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will invite the council to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. You may mute yourself or be muted by the meeting's meeting host by clicking the microphone mute slash unmute icon, pressing the mute button on your telephone, or by pressing star six on your telephone keypad. Please reserve the chat function for technical difficulties, and at first, the city council. After the city council has made their comments and asked their questions, it's a public hearing, so we'll open that up to the public. And if you would like to speak on an issue, please type your name in the chat, and then I'll ask you your name, and you'll say your name and your address for the record. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. So just briefly, we have, we're going to discuss three items tonight in public hearing settings. Let's try to stay focused on one of them at a time and not run them together, if we could do that. Everybody good? I would entertain a motion to accept the late file on order number 53 from Councilor Copeland.
So moved. Second?
And a roll call.
Ames? Yes. Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Matando?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. And that said, I will turn the microphone over to Councilor Copeland. Dominic?
All right. Thank you, Council President, and thank you, everyone else, for coming out. So this resolution was about honoring or recognizing the Beverly Boys varsity basketball team over the last two seasons, and especially this season, all the people that were involved in making the season successful. So I'm going to read the cover letter first, and then I'll go through the resolution itself. And when I get to the resolution, for anyone that doesn't know this process, there's a bunch of whereas's, so that's just part of the process that we have to go through. So as far as the cover letter. Dear Honorable City Council, I would respectfully request that you consider supporting the attached resolution that recognizes the accomplishments of Beverly High School Boys varsity basketball team during both the 2019-2020 season and the 2020-2021 season, along with those whose hard work and dedication made the season possible. The COVID-19 pandemic deeply impacted the end of the 2019-2020 season and the entire 2020-2021 season. In 2019, the varsity boys team made Beverly basketball history by becoming MIAA D2 North Champions and falling one game short of the state championship. The Beverly Boys varsity basketball team also participated in the last game played at the Boston Garden before basketball at all levels was shut down due to the COVID-19 pandemic. During the 2020-2021 season, the Beverly's Boys varsity basketball team went undefeated at 13-0, and is listed in many polls as either the number-two team in the state or part of their top 10 teams in the state. The 2020-21 season is a testament to the spirit of the community and everyone involved in making the season happen. It is important to recognize and give thanks and encourage all involved, including the players, for their efforts in these difficult times. Over the last two seasons, they will have had no banquet, no awards, no trophies, just the satisfaction of a job well done. With this resolution, they will now have a thank you from a grateful community. Respectfully, dominant Copeland Council, Ward 6. And here is the overall resolution for the Beverly High School Boys varsity basketball team. Whereas the Beverly Boys varsity basketball team during the 2019-2020 season won the most games in Beverly basketball history at 21, they are also the first Beverly Boys varsity basketball team to become MIAA D2 North Champions and compete in the Division II state semifinals one game away from the state championship. Whereas the Beverly Boys varsity basketball team played the last game at the Boston Garden during the 2019-2020 season before basketball on all levels was shut down due to the COVID-19 pandemic. As a team and a community, the shutdown meant the historic accomplishments of this team, the coaching staff, and all those involved in helping to make it possible were not able to be fully recognized and celebrated. Whereas the Beverly Boys varsity basketball team during the 2020-2021 season completed an undefeated season, going 13-0 during a shortened season where they had to wear masks at all times, including during the game, deal with games being canceled and delayed, no offseason, and limited practice. Whereas to start the season, news reporters said at the Northeastern Basketball Conference during the 2020-2021 season that any team could beat any team, and even after a few games into the season, they listed other teams as the one that beat in the conference. Beverly Boys varsity basketball was able to prove that they were not only the team to beat, but that for the 2020-2021 season, they would not be beaten. Whereas the Beverly Boys varsity basketball team and coaching staff, through hard work along with perseverance, were able to prove that the 2019-2020 season was not a fluke. Even in the worst of times, they remain dedicated to proving themselves and proudly representing the orange and black of Beverly, Massachusetts. Whereas the 2019-2020 Beverly Boys varsity basketball team coaching staff consisted of head coach Matt Karakoudis, assistant coaches Jeff Downey, Tyler Suggs, Adam Russo, and manager student Danny Grant. Whereas the 2020-2021 Beverly Boys varsity basketball team coaching staff consisted of head coach Matt Karakoudis, assistant coaches Jeff Downey and Adam Russo. Whereas it took a great and combined effort to make the season happen with great efforts from Beverly High's athletic director, Dan Keefe, principal Elizabeth Taylor, athletic trainer Corey Carmody, Beverly educator Ben Goodhu, who braved his own health concerns to volunteer, Beverly educator Holly Staffier, and various volunteers who helped to make the season possible, including the custodial staff and referees. Whereas Beverly High School was one of the only four schools, only four schools, to allow parents to attend in person to watch their children play. It took a special effort, dedication, many hours, and volunteer efforts to make the space safe and clean to assure the well-being of players and each grouping of parents. Whereas fundraising efforts had to be restricted due to the COVID-19 pandemic, fundraising still resulted in thousands of dollars being raised for the program, the help to acknowledge the middle school travel basketball teams, including both boys and girls' travel teams, along with high school freshmen, JV, and varsity teams, including both boys and girls' teams. Fundraising efforts were spearheaded by Lisa Moreland and Shannon Copeland and the members of the Beverly Basketball Boosters Organization. Fundraising was made successful by all the parents and supporters who sold and purchased raffle tickets. Whereas without the amazing efforts of BevCam, headed up by Robert Doakes, in this specific effort, it would not have been possible for parents, the local community, and nationwide supporters to partake in the season and watch the entertaining efforts of all the high school basketball teams. BevCam allowed the community to be a community and safely come together whether online or in television, providing for an experience that was head and shoulders above all other efforts. Thank you to the camera efforts of Chris Roy, Kathy Roy, and Mark Lehman. Whereas the announcers for the BevCam broadcast consisted of Tom Donovan, Dominic Lorenzana, and Rich Francis. Together, they combined to provide a stellar experience. Tommy has been a longtime advocate of the Beverly basketball program as a former coach and braved his own health to show his ongoing support. Whereas the players of the 2019-2020 Beverly Boys varsity basketball team consisted of captains and seniors Duncan Moreland, Jack Crowley, Damian Boris, Justin De La Cruz, team members Tristan Abreu, Austin Air, Nick Perdanka, Gabe Copeland, Brendan Frost, Cam Jones, Brooke Landman, Kevin Regan, Zach Sparkman, Dylan Crowley, and Nick Fox. Whereas the players of the 2020-2021 Beverly Boys basketball team consisted of captains and seniors Cam Jones and Brendan Frost, team members Tristan Abreu, Lucas Aguilar, Nick Perdanka, Gabe Copeland, Dylan Crowley, Nick Fox, Griffin Francis, Brady Frost, Brooke Landman, Zach Sparkman, and Brady Trask. Whereas the 2020-2021 Beverly Boys varsity basketball team ended their season by defeating a tough Low Catholic team, whose starters consisted of mostly seniors, two of which were 1,000-point scorers. Beverly won in overtime by a score of 78 to 74 to finish a successful undefeated season. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the City of Beverly does hereby commend both the 2019-2020 and 2020-2021 Beverly Boys varsity basketball teams for their outstanding and history-making efforts. Along with the coaching staff, BevCam, fundraisers, volunteers, and school officials all showed special effort in coming together as a community during a global pandemic to secure the safety and well-being of all involved. This truly was a special effort by a special group of people who showed the true spirit of the City of Beverly. And order that the city clerk spread a copy of this resolution upon the city records.
Great work, Councilor Copeland. I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames? An enthusiastic yes. Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matando?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. How about a round of applause for everyone? Nice work. And I can see that a lot of, a lot of the players are on our meeting cloud, as well as some of the coaches. I'm going to go to Councilor Flaherty. He had his hand up. Councilor Flaherty?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just one other thing. Very well, nicely done, Councilor Copeland. I'd also like to congratulate all the student athletes, boys and girls' teams who might not have been as successful in the wins and loss column, but did a great job, you know, last couple, last year through COVID, and especially the fall/winter seasons, very difficult time for all the student athletes, so congratulations to all of them.
And everybody that's on the call or on video, because we voted in favor of the resolution, you have to stay for the entire meeting. No, I'm just kidding about that. Thanks for being, congrats on a great season, and then we'll move on to our next, our next agenda item. Thank you again, Councilor Copeland.
Thank you, Council President.
We have a public hearing scheduled for 7:15 on order number 34. Ms. Kent, could you read that, please?
Number 34. Order that the city council of the City of Beverly hold a public hearing on Monday, March 1st, 2021 at 7:15 PM. Remote on Google Meet livestream of BevCam relative to the transfer of 750,000 from the city's certified free cash balance to fund the replacement of the high school turf field. This was in the newspaper on February 19, 2021.
And I would entertain a motion to receive that in place and on file.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames? Yes. Copeland?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Matando?
Yes.
Did I say Feldman? Oh, but yes. Only one.
Did you say me? I'm yes to him. Okay. I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of our previous meeting that was held on February 16, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames? Yes. Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Matando?
Yes.
Did I say Feldman? Oh, but yes. Only one.
Did you say me? I'm yes to him. Okay. I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of our previous meeting that was held on February 16, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames? Yes. Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Matando?
Yes.
And Guanci.
And I will vote yes also, even though I did not, I wasn't at the meeting, I read the meeting, I read the meeting minutes, and it sounds like you all did a wonderful job. Thank you. Nice job, Ms. Kent and Ms. Dixon. We're going to go out of order, so I'm going to go to unfinished business, Ms. Kent.
Okay. Order number 32. Dear Honorable City Council, attached for your review and approval is a proposed 2021 member rate schedule for the Beverly Golf and Tennis Club submitted by the Golf Facilities Management, Inc., and recommended by the Beverly Golf and Tennis Commission. There are no changes to the rules and member permit fees that were placed in 2021. The Beverly Golf and Tennis Commission hereby requests the golf fees for member permit fees be increased. This will be the first increase in 10 years with the average increase less than 5% across the board of 2021. The 2021 rates have been reviewed and accepted by the commission on January 12, 2021. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
And this was held last week, so and I think that Mr. William Lau, the Chair of the Beverly Golf and Tennis Commission, is here. Mr. Lau, are you here?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Good, terrific. I'm not on video because I have my usual Google Meet problems getting on video. However, thank you, Council President, for the opportunity to present the 2021 season dues for the 110-year-old Beverly Golf and Tennis Club. The club is managed by Golf Facilities Management, GFMI, and it has oversight by the Beverly Golf and Tennis Commission, appointed by the mayor and approved by the city council. This is GFMI's start of the 12th year managing the club. GFMI has worked hand in hand with the commission to bring the facility back up to a very popular place to play over the past 11 years. During the 11 years, the commission has submitted the season dues for our city council to approve with no objections in all those years. The 2021 season dues have actually no changes for club rules, greens fees, or cot fees. The GFMI is requesting that a member fee, membership fee, increase of less than 5% moving forward. This is the first increase in membership fee in 11 years, and should carry them through for the next eight to 10 years. Chris Carter, GFMI CEO, has requested an increase due to the rising costs associated with minimum wages. The 11, 11 years ago, they were paying $8 an hour, and now it's up to, as of January 1st, $13.50 an hour for 2021, and expecting to go to $15 an hour. GFMI spends approximately 28,000 hours per year for administrative staff, maintenance crew, operations, and pro-staff, pro-shop staff. Commission has reviewed this request and voted unanimously to approve and forward to the mayor and to the city council for approval. I believe Chris Carter, CEO of GFMI, is also on the line tonight, although I can't see him, unless you, if there are any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lau. Councilor Matando has a question.
Not a question, Council President, but thank you. Mr. Lau, I just wanted to say thank you. Uniquely enough, the golf course board is Ward 1, but the clubhouse sits in Ward 3. But I know the management company's been very responsive whenever we've had issues. One of the things was the fence coming down, so I want to thank them while I have them on the line. The other thing that I want to also say is, from what I understand from a lot of golfers that come into the restaurant, that the courses look phenomenal right now, they've just continually get better each, each year, and I also want to commend them for their continued efforts of upgrading the course, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Matando. Councilor Flaherty?
Yes, I just want to echo that. I hear the course is in great shape, and I appreciate everybody's hard work on that. It's, you know, a few years back, we didn't have the, have this, so the idea of where the course is and the hard work that people are doing has done a great job for the community. But I also recognize and support the increase. You know, when you have minimum wage going up from, you know, $8 to $10 to now 13 and to 15, that money has to come from somewhere, so it's very unfortunate, but obviously necessary to be able to support those increases because not only it's, being able to support businesses, the increase has to come from, from someplace, and that's the, that's the reason, and it's a smart move to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Flaherty. Anybody else with any questions or comments? I mean, I'll just add that Golf Facilities Management took over the golf course after a really rough patch, where we had the previous operator, Johnson Golf, run the place into the ground, not spending enough money, not doing necessary repairs, and it was a belligerent relationship between the city and the manager, management company, which didn't work out good for anybody. So they've done, they've done a wonderful job. I mean, I started playing golf again last summer, and it was, the greens are great, the fairways are green. As a non-member, their rates are still really affordable. Who's there? Council Feldman?
Yeah, thank you. I just had a quick question, more of an interest. With the, with the pandemic and the restrictions and everything, has there been a significant increase in activity, like interest, and have you considered expanding kind of the programs that are offered for youth or anything of that nature, given the interest in outdoor activities?
Chris? Go ahead, Chris.
Mr. Carter, thank you. Unmuted. There you go.
Thank you, city council, for having me on tonight, and I appreciate the fact, all the nice comments you've had. We've had a great relationship with the city going into our 12th season, season. And to answer your question, yes, we are seeing more interest in youth golf especially, and obviously adult golf, and we're increasing our, we're doing PJ Junior League this season and the past couple of seasons. We have many Nike golf camps, the junior golf camps, so you may drive by and see the clinics out in the front green in the driving range, and we also have some adult beginner, and then obviously a lot of private lessons. The range is on the small side, but we, we try to maximize as many instructional programs we can run, and then adding some, some new golfer leagues. We added a ladies beginner league on Wednesday afternoons, and we're continuing to look at opportunities to increase play and, you know, obviously just add, add more people to the golfing population. You know, we definitely with the COVID was a challenge overall, but it, it somewhat benefited golf, it was a great way to get out and socially distance yourself, and we saw a bit of an increase. You know, the weather was fantastic, course in great shape, and so we hope to continue that. And then with Governor Baker, you know, changing some of his regulations, we hope to get back to having more functions in the clubhouse, which unfortunately was, was a totally down year for functions. We able to utilize the pub a little bit on the veranda, but getting back to hosting more, you know, functions in the ballroom and, and the fireside room.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Anybody else have a question or a comment? I just have one. Chris, what about tournament golf? Is that going to be back again this year in terms of fundraisers that used, usually typically are on Mondays?
That is correct. So we do most of the outings on Mondays, especially the fundraisers, and, you know, I really think the big thing, if the, if the guidelines as of March 22nd stay in effect going throughout the golf season, where potentially we can have now 100 possibly backup seats in the ballroom, where most of the fundraisers make most of their money. We did have a few last year, we ended up doing it tee times, but, you know, most of the groups do want to have that shotgun, where they all start at the same time and come in at the same time. As long as we can follow the guidelines and keep socially distanced, then, then we are definitely looking forward to having the fundraisers back, you know, the Chamber of Commerce, the Rotary, School of the Deaf, Beverly Football Boosters, you name it. I know they're all definitely wanting to get back, you know, get back to their regular dates.
Thanks, Chris. Councilor Ames?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's great to hear you, Mr. Lau. I was just curious about the level of membership that you have right now at the club. Are you full up? Or are you looking for, you know, many new members or just a few, just where you're at?
No, we're always looking for new members, and we had a bit of an increase last year, and we're hoping to have possibly, you know, another possible increase. We see a, a large amount of young adults. We created a new category a couple of years ago, the age bracket. the age bracket to thirty-five, and gave them a bit of a discount, trying to, you know, bring some more, um, younger members to, to the club. Right now, we have approximately two hundred full-time members, and we do have a, a, a good amount of more limited, where, you know, they're only allowed to play during the week. So we have room to grow, especially in that, on that full, um, weekend member, and, and, and that definitely helps with running the tournaments. And we have a really, uh, full tournament schedule, and we'd like to continue to grow that, such as the club championship and the traditional four balls and, and such.
And the junior, the deal you give juniors, you can't beat it. I mean, there's so many young kids that out there, high schoolers that are out there playing golf. A great deal. Uh, does, does anybody else have anything to add? Uh, Mr. Lau, thank you. Mr. Carter, thank you for being here. I will entertain a motion to approve, uh, the member rate schedule for the Beverly Golf and Tennis Club. So moved?
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Dodman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Housman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi.
Yes. Thank you. Uh, our next public hearing is scheduled for seven forty-five, so what I would like to do, if Mr. Ailes agrees with me, uh, he sent us a spreadsheet about, uh, free cash and free cash that the administration would like to use. Uh, Mr. Ailes, would now be a good time to go over that before we get into our public hearings?
Um, I'd be happy to share, um, the slides that I prepared. They're a little different than the, uh, the traditional list that I, that I've shared with you in the past. But I'm happy to go through that if you'd like.
And you think that would help before we get into our public hearings?
Or we could, we could deal with it as part of the public hearing, um, just to give a quick overview. Whatever's more convenient for your agenda.
Well, we have a few minutes, so why don't we go?
Okay, let me, uh, let me try to, to share, uh, what it is I have here. As you all know, we have a few requests, uh, this evening, uh, public hearings related to free cash draws. And, uh, can everyone see this? Yeah, okay. Um, and so I just wanted to take a minute to just give a quick overview of what free cash is, um, because it's kind of a term that gets thrown around a lot, but, um, we really need to understand what it is, where it comes from, um, how it is used, how it's replenished, um, and how this benefits our taxpayers, your constituents. So, um, if you bear with me real quickly here, I just want to put the official, um, description of what free cash is. It is outside of the budget cycle, and it is a standalone amount that gets certified annually by the Division of Local Services. And this amount is, represents the amount of money that the city has that is unrestricted and available for appropriation. Like to think of it as a savings account. It's the city's savings account that you, as council members, the mayor as, uh, the requesting body, can ask to use for unforeseen issues, uh, for one-time needs, for capital items, uh, for transfers to different stabilization funds or liability funds that we have outstanding, and that's precisely how we do use it. There is, uh, what's called a blackout period, because every year we submit our balance sheet and our financials to the Department of Revenue, and they go through them, and so from July first, when the fiscal year starts, until the date they certify it, which is typically in the fall, we do not have access to any free cash money. Uh, because they need to make sure that our books are balanced and that we don't have deficits and things we need to deal with. Um, and so they don't give us that number until they're one-hundred percent certain what the value is. Um, and so that is why, once it's certified, we typically come before, we being the administration, typically come before the city council and, uh, begin to assess what makes sense in, in, uh, order of asks, uh, to use that free cash for. So, um, how it comes to be a number and kind of what factors into it, uh, the, the things that help free cash grow are, every year when we set a budget, we anticipate a certain amount of revenue coming in. And if, if the revenues come in greater than what we anticipate, then that adds to the free cash number. If the amounts that the council appropriates for an operating budget out of the general fund goes unspent, that amount increases the free cash value. Those are what we call, um, either positive revenue variances or positive expenditure variances. So those increase the free cash level. What decreases the free cash level is the requests like the ones that are before you this evening. So, uh, DOR guidance and best practices, uh, give a range of uses that are appropriate for free cash, and I've listed them down below on this slide in the blue. One-time expenditures, capital projects that are typically one-time in nature. Um, it's, it can be used to build or replenish stabilization funds, you can pay down debt with it, uh, or any unforeseen or emergency needs. What they frown upon is using free cash to fund recurring costs, because free cash itself is not a recurring revenue source. So this is how we've, um, typically used it, and as you all know, it's kind of a balancing act that we do each year. And we need to make sure that the amounts of money that we're depleting from free cash can ultimately get replenished back to a level that is, um, outlined in our, in our financial policies of a three to eight percent, uh, of our operating budget. And so, um, what we typically do is we wait till a period in the fiscal year where we have some certainty around where revenues are trending, where expenditures are trending in the operating year, so that we can be certain, certain levels will go back into free cash. And that is how we effectively, uh, determine how much we, we would come to the council to ask to release in a given year. So this is a cool little spreadsheet, uh, or, or chart that I did that shows our historical levels of free cash. Now, the green represents the range, three to eight percent, that we, uh, typically like to see free cash stay within. And you can see, over the course of years, this is, this represents multiple years, it goes up and down, but it's still relatively within that range of three to eight percent. So the peaks of this blue line represent the levels that are certified in a given year. And then as we come to the council and the council approves, transfers out, you can see it, it brings that amount down, and that represents the valley, what's left of free cash after we make certain requests. And we do that so that we know we can certify back up at a level that's within the three to eight percent range. So the, the, the request you have this evening are no different, um, than, um, historical, uh, ranges here and, and would fall within that three to eight percent. These are the things that the, uh, this city council and previous city councils have approved the use of free cash for. Stabilization fund, OPEB trust fund, which is a three-hundred-and-thirty-million-dollar liability that the city has. Uh, snow and ice shortfalls, we replaced the Herd Stadium seating, uh, we collectively, uh, redid the Centerville parking lot. We've done a number of intersection, uh, work, uh, and designing of intersections, which ultimately translate to potential grant funds coming from the state. The North Beverly Fire Station, the work that was done up there a few years ago, the roofs at DPW, the high school track and softball fields, uh, roads and sidewalks are always, uh, a good use of this funds. Uh, dispatch equipment, uh, the police sta- station construction project. Um, if tonight's request is approved, there will have been five million dollars that have come from free cash and put into the police station project, but we'll get to that during the public hearing. Uh, we replaced all the streetlights with LED, um, light fixtures, and that effectively took our energy consumption uh, and brought it down to a third, uh, for our streetlights. Uh, and then we did a project for the school security, uh, recently. And so all of these projects are good uses of free cash. And the reason it's a good pro, i- it's a good, uh, policy to use the free cash the way we do is because we're able to tackle mid- and small-sized projects without placing that burden into the operating budget. Because we know how much money is available in free cash. We're commit, we, we ultimately commit to certain projects with certainty that that money's there. When we build an operating budget, we're speculating what we think will come in in revenue. And so you could, you could very easily overextend the city by placing too much burden within the operating budget. But at least with free cash, we know with certainty what the values are, and we can feel comfortable spending that down to a reasonable level. That limits our financial risk. One of the major things we've been able to do, which is a benefit to the taxpayers collectively, is that we've built and maintained the reserves to, to reasonable levels, and that's one of the requests that are before you this evening. This creates financial stability for the taxpayers. This ensures service levels remain consistent even in difficult times. We've also paid cash for a number of projects that I just, uh, that I just mentioned, and what's great about that is you avoid borrowing costs. Not only do you end up paying interest by borrowing money, just like a mortgage on your home, but, um, you're not, again, building it into the operating budget, which creates flexibility for the times where you do need to, uh, to move money around or, or to, uh, you know, uh, assume a, a cotton revenue or something like that. So I just want to reemphasize that the current policies we have in place for the use of free cash are consistent with best prac- practices that we see across the state, um, and it also helps the city's bond rating. What we do with our free cash is seen as a positive thing. So when Standard and Poor's comes in and says, "Okay, Beverly, you want to issue some debt", and they look at our financial structure, they check the box and say, "Beverly, you're doing great with your free cash and your stabilization reserves. We're gonna probably get a better interest rate than we otherwise would had you not used the policies that you have in place around this stuff." So that's all I had, and I really appreciate the opportunity to share this with you. I think it's good to have a refresher every once in a while. Um, but I'm happy to talk about this in our public hearings or now, whatever, whatever, uh, you, you'd like.
I'm mute, Paul.
I thought you were sick of listening to me. We have Council Copeland, Council Rotundo, Council Feldman, and Council Ames. Still four relatively new city councilors, and, I mean, twenty-twenty was, was a hard year to be a, uh, first-time city councillor. And the information that you provide, Mr. Ailes, it's straightforward, uh, regular nine-part-time city employees like the city council, we can understand what you say. It's, uh, it's very much appreciated. Uh, before, the public hearing starts at seven forty-five, but I will take two quick, quick questions from Council, well, first from Council Housman, and then Council Rotundo. Council Housman?
Yeah, um, it's really a, a, a request of Mr. Ailes if he would, uh, share that PowerPoint. Uh, there are times when, uh, either by reference or discuss, discussing, uh, fiscal matters with clients, uh, excuse, with constituents, that, um, being able to pull up a, a PowerPoint like that and, and show it would be, would be really helpful. I, I think it's a, it's a good sort of public, uh, municipal finance education tool. So, uh, well done. Thank you for sharing.
It'd be my pleasure. I'll get that off to you.
Uh, great idea, Council Housman. Thank you. And you'll send that to everybody. Uh, Council Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Bryant, just a quick question in regards to, I know there's a, uh, financial policy that the council adopted in two thousand and eighteen, I believe, with the help of our, um, budget analyst. What is the standard, if there is one, with the DOR recommending for free cash as well as the stabilization fund to our total budget? Is there an actual percentage? I know you have the three to eight percent that we adopted, but is there any sort of a recommendation that the DOR would suggest to us?
There is a published, um, document that the DOR put out in regards to free cash, and that states three to five percent is a good target. So we typically exceed that. Because we use it the way we do, we need to draw it down to within that range. We, and, and if we, if we certified it, say, like, a four percent level, which is ultimately within the guidance of DOR, when we draw it down, we would be well below the three percent. So by certifying at a higher level, it allows us a lot more flexibility.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Rotundo. All right, it's seven forty-five. Let's call to order our seven forty-five public hearing on order number thirty-five. Ms. Kent, could you please read that?
Order number thirty-five. Orders, the City Council, the City of Beverly, hold a public hearing on Monday, March first, twenty-twenty-one, at seven forty-five PM. Remote on Google Meet livestream on Beverly PM relative to the transfer of one million, three hundred thousand dollars from the city's certified free cash balance to fund the purchase of a ladder truck. And this was published in the newspaper on Friday, February nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. We'll go to Mr. Ailes first, but also, uh, our new police chief, Peter O'Connor, is here tonight also. Mr. Ailes?
Yes, thank you. Um, I'll be brief. Uh, this may sound familiar to a lot of you, uh, because back in July, we were before you talking about the same request. The difference was, um, and this relates to what I just, uh, spoke to about free cash. Back in July, we didn't have access to free cash. Had we had access, this administration would have come with a request to transfer free cash at that point in time. But because there's a blackout period until DOR certifies our financials, we came to the council and asked for a loan authorization, which is a legal authorization to allow the city to then enter into a contract and order the truck. Um, and so we did just that. Uh, Chief O'Connor, uh, placed an order for the ladder truck. It's on order. It's being built. Um, and now that we've have the free cash certified, we would like to rescind the original loan order, get it off the books, and use the cash to pay for the purchase. And ultimately, that's what we'd like to do. That's what the request is before you this evening, and that avoids these costs being built into the operating budget.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. Uh, Council Ames, you have a question?
Um, it kind of, Mr. President, it runs back to the presentation, so I can hold off uh, regarding, um, just the second half of, uh, Council Rotundo's question about the reserve fund levels, and I just had a question about his spiky graph. But we can hold off until we get to free cash.
Okay, good idea. Thank you. Uh, let's go to Chief O'Connor. Chief, do you have anything to add? Or tell us how this, uh, piece of equipment is gonna, uh, make your department that much better?
So this is going to be our primary ladder truck for the city. It's, uh, being built, uh, as Bryant said, uh, right now, we've just been getting our first set of pictures of the chassis and the cab. Uh, probably gonna be doing about twelve-hundred runs a year, and it will, like I said, it'll be the only ladder truck in the city. So, um, our reserve ladder truck, uh, Truck Two, uh, failed an inspection last year, so we've been borrowing a Boston ladder for a little while. They've been great. The truck has been great. Uh, it's a super beneficial for us to borrow that. Uh, but this'll, this'll go to being a primary piece in Truck One, uh, which we use as the primary precinct, uh, right now will become our, our reserve truck. Now, at that time, it'll be about, uh, twelve years old, so.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, Chief, quick question. Did you have somebody in-house that designs your, uh, when you get a new piece of, uh, equipment? Do you have somebody that helps design that?
Typically, what we do is we do a committee, um, usually three or four, uh, firefighters through offices, uh, along with a maintenance officer, and we include, uh, it used to be Jack Morris, our mechanic. We include DPW in some of the, uh, uh, in some of the committee meetings, so we get the mechanics of the truck right. But, uh, yeah, we try to go, we try to base it on experience. We go around, we'll look at, uh, other apparatus. Um, we'll take drawings from the manufacturers and, and kind of compare some stuff, uh, but it usually comes from mostly within the design.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, Council Feldman?
Yeah, um, quick question. What, do you know when it will be done? Do we have a timeline of, I know it takes quite a while to build this, but do you know when it will be delivered?
We're hoping it's gonna be delivered, um, October. I think we're looking at right now.
Thank you. All set, Council Feldman?
Yep, that was it.
Uh, anybody else from the city council have any questions for either Mr. Ailes or Chief O'Connor? Okay, uh, do, are there any members of the public still tuned in that would like to make a comment on this, uh, request? Okay, hearing no further questions or comments. I'll close our public hearing, and I will ask Ms. Kent for, uh, no, I'll close our public hearing, and then I will ask for a motion to approve.
So moved?
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Dodman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Housman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi.
Yes, I'm still shaky with Google Meet. I can't wait to the day, and I hope it happens before the end of this year, that we're back in city council chambers, so I can see everybody's smiling faces. Um, it's definitely a lot easier. So our next public hearing is not scheduled until eight fifteen. Thank you, Chief O'Connor, and thank you, Mr. Ailes, for all your help with that one. So let's move on to communications from His Honor, the mayor.
Order number thirty-four, A. Dear Honorable City Council, I am drawing my request previously filed as order number thirty-four for the use of free cash for the replacement of the high school turf field. As such, the public hearing scheduled for Monday, March first, twenty-twenty-one will not be necessary. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
And I would thank Mayor Cahill for that, and I would entertain a motion to approve his request.
Sub second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guansey?
Yes. Ms. Kent, let's go to order number 38.
Order number 38. Dear Honorable City Council, I am submitting for your consideration and approval for the First Amendment of the Special Tax Assessment Agreement between the City of Beverly and Beverly Restaurant Associates LLC pertaining to One Water Street attached here too. On or about April 8, 2019, the council approved a special tax assessment agreement between the City of Beverly and Beverly Restaurant Associates LLC. The STA agreement was authorized under Master General Law, Chapter 23A, Section 3EC, and was in a means of providing relief from real property tax to promote investment in the One Water Street project. It was offered by the city as an incentive, and the RFP on One Water Street is tool to address the many challenges surrounding the properties, redevelopment of the property of the city's desired use and broader public benefit. Due to unforeseen challenges, there were delays in the development and the construction schedule for the project. The project, however, is now on track and fully permitted. It is the city's understanding that BRA plans to open September 2022. In light of this, the city and the BRA was to amend the STA in order to allow BRA to receive the full benefit of the original STA as agreed to and completed by the parties. The city has been very vigorous in effort in support of projects seeking tax incentives, selecting those that will yield job growth, make substantial investments in Beverly, in this case will act as a catalyst in attracting additional investment along Beverly's Harbor front. The proposed project is consistent with fee standards, and therefore, the STA agreement approved in 2019 includes a reduction in real estate taxes assessed on the property over a five-year period starting in fiscal year '21 and ending after fiscal year '25. The established reductions begins at 100% for the first two years, decreases to 75% the third year, 50% the fourth year, and 25% for fifth and final year. The proposed amendment does not change these factors. This simply shifts the start and end date out by two years. In order for amendment to be valid after city council approval, it must be also approved by the EACC, which oversees the Economic Development Incentive Program, EDIP, of the Commonwealth. The EACC has requested information by the last week of February in order to be on the agenda at the next meeting on March 18, 2021. The EACC only meets four times per year. The STA must be amended before June 1, 2021, in order to ensure the city's board of assessors has sufficient time to make the change. An anticipated rendition letter from the ECDC will be sent under separate cover due to the timing of this meeting. Because this request is time sensitive, I request that you seek action on February 16, 2021. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor. The only thing, I believe the meeting is March 15, not 18.
Okay, right. Mayor Cahill, do you want to take this one?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. It's good to see everybody. So just an update from the letter that Ms. Kent read. When we knew we weren't weren't going to be able to have everybody here at the last meeting, knowing that you folks may have some questions, wanted to make sure we had the whole team available. We checked with the folks at EDIP, and they said that they were good with us being able to have this considered by you folks tonight, and we can get them the information following on tonight's meeting, and that will still be timely enough for that March meeting of the EACC. So, you know, just quickly stated, the, you know, we had hopes the project would have been started, constructed, built, and opened more quickly. COVID obviously had other things in mind. And so this, this really, I mean, the point of the stay was to help make this project more of a, really completely viable. And it was always a tool in the in the state's toolbox of, you know, of tax relief for cities and towns to use. This is, as you know, it's a deferral before we begin taxing a property that, you know, we've owned as a city for a number of years, and we, I say we, two administrations, a whole lot of people over decades have have really kind of brought us to this point of having the right partner here to build the restaurant that we have long hoped will activate the waterfront in all good ways for the community. So the, you know, it's always been, I say, it's been understood now for the last few years that this was a necessary piece of the overall financial picture. So it being an available tool under the state's economic development programs, we figured, and, you know, we all agreed on this. I know some of you weren't here yet when this was voted originally, is that right? Just thinking back, and some of you were. So let me just say that, you know, we're happy to answer questions. We do have several people here available to speak to different pieces of this. Mr. Karen, our assessor is here, Mr. Ailes, obviously, Ms. Nguyen, our planning director, and Marty Bloom, the principal with the with the restaurant development company, is here as well. So if you have questions, please, we're happy to try to try to clarify or enlighten anybody.
Thank you, Mayor.
Council President, if you might, the March 18 date refers to the EACC meeting, not the city council meeting. So that's, March 18 is when the EACC is meeting to vote on this.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Let's go to Council Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor, just a few understandings. Like you said, there's four members on this council who weren't part of the early process. And so first, I want to say that I'm in favor of it. I think it's a great project going forward, especially with the pandemic. But my understanding of the ask is really just the changing of the dates. It's not so much the terms of the 100% and all that, right? Those are already in place. That's already been voted on and taken by the prior council to us, correct?
I'm sorry.
The original agreement that was in place, all your, all this order is asking is that we change the start date from the, to next year, basically, because of the construction maybe taking a little longer, the financing due to the pandemic and things of that nature.
Yes, the whole of the ask tonight is to delay two years, the beginning date of the stay. That's, that's, that's exactly it. Mr. Karen, did I, did I get the dates right? It's, it's two full years, and the expectation is FY '23?
Three.
Yes, it's going to be FY '23 would take effect. It was originally scheduled to take effect for FY '21, but we'd be essentially giving him 100% of nothing if we were to stay with the original schedule.
Can I ask one more question, which is actually towards Mr. Bloom? Mr. Bloom, with the pandemic, how are you coming along with the project itself? You know, I know personally, as a restaurant owner, seeing what's happening with the financing and all that stuff, are you still having good luck with all that? Has you seen the project being pushed further out, or are you still sort of seeing to be on track?
Well, we'll see. I mean, it's, as, as Mayor Cahill and I, we've discussed this many times, banks, as soon as you basically mentioned them, you want to build a new restaurant, the next sound I hear is usually a dial tone. So it's been pretty, pretty interesting. You know, most, most banks have a, seem to have a backlog of restaurants they'd like to get rid of, let alone build a new one right now. But I am at it every day. I'm, I have three new banks. A lot of my old banks are, seem to be slowly but surely waking up out of their slumber. My, my, I stand in line every day so that if this doesn't turn around soon, all the bank officers that have been doing business will be out of jobs, because that's what they're there for, is to make loans. It's just, you know, everything just took a lot longer, and it just, again, the, the banking industry is really very fearful of anything having to do with hospitality, even though it's a great project, and we think that by the time we get this open, hopefully the pandemic's behind us. But we haven't stopped, I mean, behind the scenes, we haven't stopped one nickel. I mean, we've been moving right along with plans and getting everything in place, and we just need that last little docket of financing, because we do projects differently. We put our own money in with a bank usually. A lot of projects get done, they just raise equity from friends, family, things like that. And so I've done that for 40 years, and I've done it the same way usually. I don't like a lot of partners, so I like doing things pretty much myself. And so I just need a bank to show me a little bit of love. We talk about it every day. It seems I spend more time doing this than I should be, but I think I'll break through it once the sun comes out and the vaccines get in arms. I think banks realize they have to go back to making loans, and we are probably more than qualified than most in our industry.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could, sometimes it's good to just take advantage of an opportunity to, you know, it's been a little while since we've spoken publicly about the project. And so for anybody who's watching who isn't familiar with Mr. Bloom, two of the restaurants he currently owns and operates are Mission on the Bay and Swan Scott, and Mission Oak Grill up, the new report. Both restaurants that, you know, some of us have been to, I'm guessing. I, I know I've been to both, and really, you know, high quality and affordable dining experiences. So it's, we're excited to get them in here.
Me too.
Cahill? Let's go to Council Rand.
Thank you. Nice to see you here, Mr. Bloom, and I'm glad to hear that the project is fully permitted. I've been following closely with, through Harbor Management Authority and just in general. I have a general question about this type of action. How common is this? Because I imagine that it's, it's not unusual for a restaurant to take a little bit longer to get started, or for development to take a little bit longer. So through the, through the state incentive, how common is it to then request an extension, basically, or shift in date?
That's a question for Ms. Nguyen, wants to answer.
I don't, I mean, I, that's like the one question I didn't ask when I talked to Maria today, the MOBD today, but I think based on my conversation with the Northeast Regional Director today, a lot of, she said, you know, really, the, this is, these EDIP programs, whether it's a tax assess, special tax assessment, or a TIF, tax increment financing, are carrots for cities and the state to use when they're difficult projects, and they really want to be flexible with developers. There's a reason that we're using them, or with the companies who are getting the benefit. And the reason often doesn't change. And so, you know, even in cases where, you know, especially with COVID, you know, when, when people are doing their annual reporting, where they're taking that into account when they're reviewing, you know, how they are, how these companies are meeting their targets. And so, you know, maybe if a company this year says, yeah, we couldn't get all of the jobs that we anticipated to get by the end of this year because of COVID or some other factor, you know, they're a little bit more flexible. So I think also with this amendment process of amending the timeline, you know, this really is a municipal action because it's local money only in this case. And so they're really following our guidance as to what we want to do and what the best interest of the city and for this project.
Thank you. All good, Council Rand?
Yes, thank you very much.
Flaherty?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say that this is a great opportunity for us as a city. I'm sure Mr. Bloom recognizes that, but the idea, I wanted to applaud Mayor Cahill because, you know, this is not a, this is a unique situation with this piece of property. It's not like it's, you know, like a regular piece of property downtown. Obviously, this is why it's taken so long, very complicated. So Mayor, thank you for moving this forward, because, you know, not everybody was on board moving this thing forward. You had a lot of complications, and I just wanted to say, a lot of people in the city are looking forward to this. When it, it does happen, it's going to be a great day for the City of Beverly and downtown.
Yeah, just to follow up on Council Flaherty, because he and I have been around probably too long, most people think, but it would be, it would be terrible to finally be within striking distance on this and then let it fall through the cracks. I mean, it's been, I guess it's been close to 25 years that there's been talk about doing a project on the waterfront at the old McDonald's site. I'm sure we all celebrated. I know Don Newman and Paul Earl from the Harbor Management Authority went down there and did a dance when they finally took down the McDonald's building. So, I mean, we're close, and I mean, this is just as simple as extending something out two years. Council Copeland?
Yes, thank you, Council President. And I just wanted to echo the sentiments. Yes, it does sound great, like a great project for the city. I just had a couple of questions. This might have been in the information, but I didn't happen to come across it. How long is the overall lease for at this point? I believe it goes beyond the timeframe set up.
Yeah, so let me, I'm going from memory. I think it's 40 with two five-year extensions, but I'm looking at Ms. Williams and Ms. Nguyen. Might, you might confirm that?
The initial lease term is 40 years, and there is an option to renew. It's either five or 10 years. But to answer your quest, question, the lease term goes well beyond the term of the stay, which is only five years.
Okay. And another question for, and thank you for that, Lisa and Mr. Mayor. And another question for Mr. Bloom. I know in business, you know, it's always moving pieces, and like you said, the banking relationship right now is a little, little crazy trying to get the financing. Any concerns or, you know, plan B, just in case things continue to fall through, or, you know, what are your thoughts there?
Well, if, I think what's going to end up is we're just going to put more of our money into it to get the bank, and we already have a considerable amount tied up in it. But fortunately, myself and partners, we have some resources that we can tap into if need be, so I don't have a concern, actually. I mean, I got, I got deals done after 9/11. I've gotten deals done in recessions and literally depressions, and it's just, you know, everybody has to wake up at the same time, and banks are sitting on a bunch of money, and eventually, they're going to have to put it to work, and I'm going to be frontline because I'm knocking their door every day. So I'm not, I'm not overly concerned, no.
All right, all right, good. Where there's a will, there's a way.
Exactly.
Yeah, thank you for doing this, and that was my, my questions, Council President.
Thank you, Council Copeland. Mr. Bloom, your confidence is very inspiring. Thank you. Council Flowers?
Thank you very much, Council President. I guess I'm just sort of circling back. I remember asking this question of you, Mr. Bloom, when you first came and spoke to us about this. And so I'm just curious to hear your thoughts or your point of view, especially now, you know, I think in terms of job creation, a new business like this, for many of our friends and neighbors, COVID has hit hard. And so, you know, job creation for any new business or any new organization coming into an area is always a part of it. And so I remember us having a little bit of this conversation that, from my perspective, you know, one thing I'm interested going forward, not specifically, you know, here, but I'd just love to hear your thoughts, is thinking about when we do give tax incentives, how we can also think about working with businesses in terms of hiring around contractors, minority hiring, hire of women contractors, prevailing wage, and then also the same breadth of hiring for local hires and minority and women hiring within the business. So I just didn't know if you had any thoughts or updates about how you would go about staffing for your contractors or for the business in terms of local labor, or how you might go about that.
So the restaurant business right now, is anybody who's able-bodied and willing to work, we pretty much hire. We're very non-discriminating. Anybody has, can, can, we don't really care. I mean, if you see any of our other restaurants, they're pretty much broad-based, all minorities, sexes. Sexual creed does not matter. We just need people that want to work and like to work and have a great, great personality. I mean, I think when this gets open, if it mirrors, and in a lot of ways, it's similar to Mission on the Bay. When we first opened Mission, we had about 120 new employees at the time, and kind of settles down somewhere north of about 100, 105 every summer. And I suspect this, this restaurant will have the exact same kind of level, be, you know, 105, maybe 110 in the summer, probably 16 in the off-season, depending upon if we have a lot of functions and things like that. I mean, we have a contractor picked. We have not, you know, gotten too much into the weeds yet on who he's going to pick as all his subs yet. We certainly will, we'll take a look and see who's out there. I mean, we're really at a point now, we just want people to, anyway, we're in the same boat everywhere. I mean, I've done a lot of, a lot of interviews with the TV station in Boston about, you know, what the biggest thing is, just every, all of us feeling safe, and that goes for my employees as well as, as, more importantly, the patrons. I mean, there's a lot of folks that are still not walking into restaurants, because they're just scared to death of it. And that goes for employees too. So, you know, when there's enough vaccine in arms and enough of a herd mentality and everything else that we keep haring every day, and people feel safe to get to walk in, I think we'll have, I don't think we'll have a problem staffing, but there's a lot of folks that need to, to get back to work, especially us. I mean, I'm spending a lot of time right now trying to get my partners and people to work for me, getting their enthusiasm back up, because people have definitely been beaten after a year, to be honest with you, and trying to get them back to a level of enjoying what they're doing, because they've been really wondering if there's, you know, this life after COVID. I believe there is, and now we just have to kind of get back to that. So, yeah, I mean, we're, I mean, all your, I'm sure as this moves along, I'm going to be getting plenty of calls from everybody in town about they got a nephew, a cousin, a college kid, and we a college kid, and we hire everybody, non-discriminatory in any fashion. We just need people that want to work hard and be part of our team. It really, really is, restaurants, anybody's running restaurants, it really is the purest form of socialism I've ever seen. When I see socialism, come work in a restaurant. You're only as good as your dishwasher and the guy who's prepping the food downstairs. And the guy that owns the place better be working just as hard as they are because otherwise it's not going to work.
All set, Council Flowers?
Yes, thank you.
I just want to say, Mr. Bloom, that was a fantastic answer. I mean, you summed it all up. And even for those of us like myself and Councilor Rotundo, who have been able to remain open to some extent, we're beaten into the ground. We can't wait for things to get back to normal. All right, let's go to Councilor Ames and then Councilor Houseman. And then I would love to be able to take a vote on this before we go into our 8:15 public hearing. Councilor Ames?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. President. It's a pleasure to meet you, Mr. Bloom. I echo Councilor Flowers' sentiments, you know, trying to have us as a community provide opportunities to, as a woman-owned business manufacturer, you know, it's always nice to get at least a level playing field. So I'm glad to hear what you have to say. I was just curious, maybe it might be Solicitor Williams, but on, as somebody new to this agreement, looking at really five through seven, the triggers, that was, I had a couple of questions. Number one, I don't think I'll be engaged in a lease 40 years from now. So just trying to understand how the transfer of this lease for this property, first off, and secondly, about the reporting and how that would impact us as a council should unfortunate events occur, just so that I understand as a counselor, our responsibility moving forward. Thank you.
So in paragraph seven of the agreement, it provides, it includes provisions in the event that the reporting or the job creation targets are not met. And essentially, it states that the, if the tenant fails to meet job creation or investment and upgrade commitments as outlined in the agreement, the city, acting through its city council upon the recommendation of the mayor, may take action to request a reduction of the stay benefits still to be received. So it's not, this, and by the way, this language is straight from the state. This is a state template. And, and so essentially, the city, it's incumbent upon the city to keep track of whether the job creation targets are being met and then to take appropriate action if the city believes that they're not, or if the reports reflect that they're not being met. So there are a couple of different options and it would have to go through the city council. And there are options for reclaiming some of the tax benefits that have been enjoyed by the tenant.
Thank you. And the 40 years, how is this lease, and then Mrs. Win as well, but how is the 40-year lease with five extensions? How does that work moving forward? Is this lease strictly through the corporation?
So the tenant is BRA.
Okay.
The city is landlord and the tenant is an entity that, the abbreviation is BRA. I can't remember what it stands for. The 40-year term actually starts upon the rent commencement date, which is when they actually start to, when they have their certificate of occupancy. So right now, the lease is effective, but it's essentially a development agreement right now. So the 40 years will start presumably in the summer of, or early fall 2022. And then it will run for 40 years. And then there's an option for two, five-year extensions at the end of the 40 years.
And can BRA lease this property to someone else? Or if the lease, they decide no longer to use it as a restaurant? Or does it come back to the city?
So under the lease, and they can only use the property for purposes of operating a restaurant. And it also has to be in compliance with the project agreement and amendments there too, that the city signed when it received grant money from the state when it purchased the property back in 1996. So if it's used for anything other than that, which I, you know, we're all, it would, it would be a default of the lease. And to answer your question, there are, the tenant does have the ability, I think, to assign the lease, subject to certain terms and conditions, which is, would be standard in this type of a lease. And I think they would need it for purposes of financing, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
Oops, you're on mute, Council Quancy. And I don't know if you wanted me to add, I was just going to add, Councilor Ames, there is an, there is an electronic reporting system that the EDIP has in place. So everybody that has a TIF or a stay gets emails through the EDIP. They annually report and the city of Beverly has our own login so we can go and check. And then, you know, I think we would work with any company to try and help them and make sure that they are able to come into conformance before we go through the process of decertification.
Great answer. Thank you, Ms. Win. Let's just put this one on hold for a moment as we call to order our 8:15 public hearing on order number 36. Ms. Kent?
Order number 36, order the city council, the city of Beverly, hold a public hearing on Monday, March 1st, 2021 at 8:15 PM, remote on Google Meet, live stream at 8:00 PM relative to the transfer of $983,418 from the city's certified free cash balance to the city's stabilization fund and transfer $198,684 to be placed into the city's other post-employment benefit trust. This was in the newspaper on Friday, February 19, 2021.
I would entertain a motion to recess this public hearing until 8:30 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Bellman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Houseman, yes.
Yeah.
Guanxi.
Yes. Okay, we are back on order number 38. And Councilor Houseman, you have the floor.
Yeah, I just, a number of things that I want to talk about or ask questions about have sort of already been raised, so I won't, I won't belabor the point. I applaud Mr. Bloom's response to how restaurants work and certainly encourage, you know, local preference when it comes to hiring for the restaurant. So two questions, one specific, one very general. The specific one is, my understanding is that the arrangements for staffing, for staff for the restaurant will be arranged in many cases, or in some cases, off-site. They will, staff will, employees will park off-site and either get to the, get to the restaurant by shuttle or what have you. But, but my understanding is you have in place agreements to make sure that parking at the site is, if not primarily, or not exclusively, it's certainly primarily for customers only, not for staff. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And, and any change, given the delay in the, you know, financing and construction and so forth, that will have, will that have any kind of adverse impact on those agreements for those off-site locations?
I don't think so, but I mean, I think we've said right along that, you know, parking is going to be our bugaboo forever.
Yep.
Of something from day one that we're never going to stop working on. I mean, it's going to be something we're going to have to always be addressing. There's never going to be a moment in the history of this restaurant where parking's not going to be probably our top priority, especially for our employees, but also for all of you and our guests too. So we're always going to be working it. I mean, we're going to, I'm sure what we, our initial thoughts are going to be, I'm sure we're going to be modifying along the line. But yeah, but our intention is to keep all the employees off the lot and.
And, okay. And how many off-site locations sort of fall into that category, at least?
We only have one right now. We only have one right now, but it does not mean between now and the time of opening and we start getting, you know, under construction. I'm going to be even putting a harder push to find something maybe a little bit closer, something a little more convenient. Again, you know, things have changed a lot. I mean, we, a lot of our, a lot of our employees use public transportation, a lot of them use Uber, a lot of them use Lyft, a lot of them actually come by bicycle now. So there's a lot of changeover, how folks get to work with us now. And so we have to monitor that. And, you know, especially, you know, especially college kids and things like that, they let them gang up together, four or five, and drive together or get dropped, dropped off. Like in, in Swanscott, probably 80% of our summer staff don't have a car, they just get dropped off.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and certainly, you know, gig working, there are a lot of different changes in the sharing economy that have occurred and will continue to occur before you open your doors.
No question.
So that is really sort of a good segue into perhaps a somewhat ridiculous question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. If you can look into your crystal ball, talking about changes, do you, how do you think about the new normal, post-COVID or sort of, you know, as response, as a result of the pandemic in terms of restaurant operation? And, you know, this sort of, sort of gets more broadly into hospitality. You know, do you see the model of what we used to think of as going, as being any different in any way going forward post-pandemic? And, you know, it's, it's, I wouldn't say it's a philosophical question, but because it's really an operational question, but it really has to do with sort of your business model, if you will, in terms of how you anticipate what changes there might be that you have to face when, you know, hopefully sooner than later we reopen.
I mean, I think, I think the real trick is, is when, when everybody feels safe. I mean, I can't do functions, my restaurant up in New Report is a, is a big wedding place. And obviously, all our weddings and bar mitzvahs that we had planned for the whole year have gotten wiped out when you have 150 people. People aren't doing that.
Yeah.
To me, that's, that's, I mean, the restaurant operation, everything we do, I mean, the, anyone who runs a restaurant right now, the amount of to-go sales I do every night is blowing my mind. I never thought I'd be turning my restaurants into QSR restaurants, but almost all of us across the whole country are doing the same thing. So I think at some point, the QSR or the, the takeout sales are going to drop. I think some of it's going to come back to, I mean, the operational wise, we're still cooking food, we're still doing everything, bars are still, at some point, are going to be reopened. I don't think that's going to change much, but I think the number one thing that will transpire as time goes on, the people are going to feel safe to attend, you know, larger gatherings. I think that's going to be the linchpin, when people still feel safe to come back for a wedding or a 150-person gathering. I think that's going to be the magic moment, we're kind of closer to normal, whatever that is. As I said, we monitor this every day and there's, there's still a whole lot of folks that aren't walking into restaurants. And there's a whole lot of folks that probably aren't going to walk into restaurants for a while.
Refresh my memory, the, the restaurant, the Beverly Waterfront, has one large function room, I believe, at the top floor. And that is more geared towards the potential for these larger functions. Do you think that piece will come back slower later?
I mean, it's, it's actually, it's actually our Swiss Army knife floor because it's going to be open most days à la carte for when the weather's beautiful and great. And then it'll occasionally do a function too. So it's, I designed it to do both. So, so if you guys want to have a big, huge city gathering at Christmas one year, well, we have the spot for it. But on a normal, you know, July 4th weekend or a nice hot summer day, it'll be open to the public and it can, it's been designed to do both. Not, it's not just one way or the other.
That's really it. Just very curious to think about, you know, what, what our hopeful new world will be when we can all reopen and get back together. Thank you.
Me too.
Council Houseman? Anybody else? All right, hearing no further questions or comments, I will entertain a motion to approve the request on order number 38.
So moved. Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Bellman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Cahill. Thank you, Ms. Win. Thank you, Ms. Williams. And special thanks to Marty Bloom for being available and answering so many questions. Great answers.
My pleasure. Well, appreciate it.
Yeah, good to see you. We'll see you again soon.
You will see me soon, no question. I'm going to be pretty much around a lot once we get rolling.
Yeah. And my wife and I have been over to Swanscott a couple of times throughout the whole thing and that your staff has done a wonderful job.
It has.
Top-notch.
Been very, very trying, keeping everybody happy, trying to keep them going. But thank you.
It's amazing what you do over there with no parking.
It's, yeah, I mean, this is, this is going to be like, like, like nothing I've ever seen. We have zero parking there and we still managed to do extremely well, so. But everybody knows, I mean, it's just people figure it out. I mean, when we opened there, we were scared to death with no parking, but the whole area of Swanscott, marble and a hun, everybody knows where to park. I don't know, they just figure it out.
Hey, if your product is good, people will get there. I would entertain a motion to return back to our 8:15 public hearing on order number 36.
So moved. Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Bellman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi.
Yes, and I need to thank Chief City Assessor, Peter Karen, for being here also. We only, usually only see him once a year, so it was good to see him again. Mr. Ailes, we are on to another free cash transfer.
Sure, thank you. In theme with this evening a bit, we're requesting a transfer of $983,418 from free cash. This is consistent with the city's existing financial policies and will be transferred over to the stabilization fund to do just that, stabilize the city's financial structure. The second component of the request is for $198,684 transfer into the OPEB trust fund. The OPEB trust actually is a fund that ultimately will fund the other post-employment benefits of employees within the city. That's primarily healthcare for retirees. And it's an obligation that the city, under mass general law, must provide to employees that have worked a minimum of 10 years with the city. And so they're entitled to healthcare within certain parameters. We annually get that liability valued. The most recent one, I believe, came in at $330 million in outstanding liability that the city has. So this is an attempt to begin to put money away to address that long-term liability. I'm happy to answer any specific questions you have about either transfer and would request your approval this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. Questions for Mr. Ailes on this one? Councilor Ames?
Thank you, Mr. President. So back to those first questions about your presentation. I, and also Counselor Rotundo's question. So you answered the question about the level of free cash being three to eight percent. What is the goal for, what is the goal for the reserve?
The stabilization reserve?
Yes, please.
So that is stated as a 10 to 15% of the annual operating budget is the target. With this transfer, if it is approved this evening, we'll get it to 11.25%. So just at the, you know, the smaller end of that scale.
And this, where, where was the revenue for the, is this transfer from free cash? That's, that's where it's coming from?
Yes.
Correct? Okay. And then on your graph with the peaks and valleys, I was just curious if you could bring that slide up for us again, please? So the, so the 20, the seven, the July 1st, 2020 number is just about at. two thousand and twenty number is just about at ten million dollars.
Correct. And then the, the decline from that peak assumes, assumes the approval of, of the requests that are before you this evening. And this was more to show you as well that even after the, if the requests are approved this evening, we still anticipate rebounding back towards about the middle of the range for next year's certification.
Are there any other requests beyond perhaps some money for the library HVAC system that we haven't heard of yet from the administrations?
So there's nothing imminent at this point that we're aware of. However, the benefit of having a healthy free cash balance is occasionally there are unforeseen. We are still not through winter. So there potentially, you know, it wouldn't be uncommon for us to look to this source if we, you know, had a March like we did in two thousand and fifteen, where we had three major snowstorms right, right in a row and were two million dollars over our, our snow budget. So, you know, without a crystal ball, it's tough to, to say what it would be. But, you know, the HVAC is the one that we know is likely to be a request soon, but beyond that, no.
Okay, and I would encourage, I mean, looking at the capital program, it definitely needs some work. And I appreciate the PowerPoint slides because they're so much more visible and I think easier for myself. And I think people watching to understand. So, so that's really important. And the last question I have is, in terms of how do you determine turnbacks to, to build free cash?
That's a great question. There is some philosophical views that go into that, that the mayor and I share. I worked at the state for decade, over a decade. And what I saw at the state level in terms of budget incentives weren't always meeting what was in the state's best interest. That's to say, there, the way the budget was produced at the state level, it incentivized spending every last dollar that was appropriated. So I would at times see agencies that would effectively just have spending sprees at the end of the fiscal year because they didn't want to turn back any money at the fear of getting cut. We don't employ that here. We like to encourage and incentivize frugality and thoughtful purchasing. And so when we have departments that may have a little bit of extra money at the end of the year, we want them to turn them back. And, and, and we've had a history of, you know, undertaking somewhat of a zero-based budget build every year with that department. So they don't in fact get penalized for turning money back. We want them to work with us. And it's been successful. All of our department had CS's partners and not here with a stick to, to, to take money from them, you know, from their operational budget. If they're more frugal in a given year or delay a purchase because it's in the best interest of taxpayers. So when we look at turnbacks, we look at historical trends. And we know with some comfort where likely large expenditures could get delayed. And so we factor that in. And then we also factor in, you know, what typical year looks like. And it's not uncommon for departments to turn back in the way of about a half a million dollars in appropriations cumulative. And then in addition to that, depending upon healthcare trends and things of that nature, we may have some turnbacks in our healthcare budget or something else. You know, so we try to keep a close eye on that. Your budget analyst, Jerry Perry, does quarterly budget reports on this. And we monitor it very closely because we want to make sure that when we come to you and ask you to appropriate free cash, that we're very confident that we can replenish it back to a responsible level.
That, thank you. Thank you so much for all of that. I personally would appreciate much more transparency on the turnbacks. Because, and I asked for and received from Mr. Perry, the turnbacks for two thousand and twenty. And for me, they were interesting, for sure, because, and, and I don't, let me put it this way, it's sort of a bigger philosophical question because, you know, it, it is, what's in the best interest of the taxpayer? So if we, as a community, decide that we're going to allocate, say, one point four million dollars for roads and we turn back three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of that budget, then, which is, you know, the whole budget was, I think, two point three million dollars. That's fourteen and a half percent. And I think there is an argument to be made across this government. I mean, there's a discussion that needs to happen to say if the, the administration says, we're going to make this investment in the community and the city council goes and votes for a budget expecting for services that we want to make sure that the money, to an extent that we're allocating, is delivered. So if you look, I mean, we turned back eight percent of the health department budget or seven percent in a pandemic. And I'm not, and I'm not saying that you guys are doing anything inappropriate. What I'm trying to suggest is that if we want to take three to five percent or whatever percentage we decide we want to take for free cash, that perhaps that number needs to come across the top, come right off the top. So that when I say I'm voting for a budget with one point five, four million dollars of paving in it, that, that I'm doing that. That those, those numbers are delivered. And I understand there has to be some wiggle room. I can really appreciate that. So even if it's two and a half percent across the top and then, but I, I don't feel comfortable. I, I think that, you know, I read this great editorial in the Washington Post where, where the writer said, we almost lost our democracy. And they were really talking nationally, but, but she said, we, you know, we've got to bring our best game to the table. That accountability is not going to be nearly enough. We need to embrace change and reform in the way we do things so that the people we represent feel, feel trust in the actions we take. And so while I say, yeah, we need to have a rainy day fund, I, I also say, there are a lot of people in the city that don't have a rainy day fund anymore. And I don't know where, and I want to make sure we can deliver services, but I really don't want to promise services and not deliver them either. And I say this with nothing but respect because I think we really have to think about very, very seriously about the way we govern as, as a council and, you know, and, and as a, a city government. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Cahill, your hand up.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks, Counselor Ames. Couple thoughts. Happy to have the conversation really in any venue about annual budget building and turnbacks because it's, I think it's a, it's a important, an important one. I will say that the turnbacks in FY twenty were very unique in that we sat down when COVID first hit and shut us all down. And we took, you know, we, we dug in hard and said, we don't know where things are headed. We could see a cratering of revenues. We could see a huge cuts in state aid, which thankfully didn't come to pass. But, you know, back in March and April, when we sat down and went through this very, you know, needed exercise of looking to see how tightly could we pull the strings on the remaining months of the fiscal year. That led to turnbacks that you wouldn't normally see. I can say to you that we all, every one of us here, want to pave every road and sidewalk we possibly can every year. Certainly not a line that we want to not spend. But if I'm remembering, it's a little fuzzy because it was a year ago, it was a pandemic ago, right? But I, I think we were looking at that and saying, well, we got to hang on to that and see. You know, if we find that it's, that it, that it's ultimately available, we'll spend it for the purpose that we originally budgeted. On the health department front, Mr. Ales might be able to help me, but I think, you know, we saw it early on with COVID that the help that came our way from the federal government, the CARES funding and the FEMA eligibilities were focused in certain areas. So even though it might seem counterintuitive that we took a turnback from health, we knew that there were other funds directly specifically being targeted for our health needs. And so this was really a, you know, kind of all-in, all-hands-on-deck approach to trying to hold on to and not spend in a window of time where we were really in the dark about where things were headed. So that, you know, we,
I totally appreciate that.
Yeah.
I really do appreciate that. And I, and I think we should and that we don't have to go too deep into it. But when I sit here and I look at some of these turnbacks and I think about just the two, I think about the resident who came before us and talked about, you know, rat, the rat infestation in her neighborhood in Ward Four. And I think about the, the two neighborhoods that I impacted, certainly that, that thirty-four thousand dollars, that's an exterminator. And, and while I, I can appreciate the bright shiny objects and I can appreciate the long-term investments. And some of them are shiny and some of them are roofs and HVAC systems and, and very practical things. And I get that. And I, I see the value in being conservative. But I also believe from the bottom of my heart that, especially in times of difficulty, that we also have a responsibility to provide services to keep our, keep each other safe. I mean, because at the end of the day, we all just want to get off the mountain alive, right? Together. We want to take care of each other. And, and, you know, that's why we had, you know, that's why we've, we've talked about race as a public health issue. That's why we've done a lot of things on this council this year to really try to show people who are in, on the front lines of this, this, you know, emergency that we care about them. But I think that spend, we need to be very careful when we cut, you know, forty percent from the building commissioner budget that we're doing what we, that, that we're providing those services. Because cutting it all, at all costs does hurt our ability to govern responsibly and govern in a way that people trust what we do.
All set. Thank you, Counselor Ames. Yeah, I think that we, while everybody said some very important things, I think that we did go off topic on that, way off topic.
If you would, I do feel the need to say that we delivered on the critical services that we are all committed to providing, even as we dug in and tried to make sure that over those last three and a half months of the fiscal year, we were able to prepare for and cushion what we feared would be some precipitous drops in revenues.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill. I would entertain a motion to recess the public hearing on order number thirty-six until nine o'clock. So moved.
Second.
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 A roll call, please.
Ames?
Copeland? Yes.
Bellman?
Yes.
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. And Counselor Copeland, remind me, when we go back to this public hearing, you're the first to speak on it. And then Counselor Rotundo and Counselor Flaherty. Ms. Kent, let's try order number thirty-seven, our eight forty-five public hearing. Call that to order. Could you please read it?
Sure. Order number thirty-seven, order that the city council of the city of Beverly hold a public hearing on Monday, March first, two thousand and twenty-one at eight forty-five PM, remote on Google Meet, live stream on BevCam relative to the transfer of two million dollars from the city's certified free cash balance to be placed into the new police station capital project fund. And this was in the newspaper on Friday, February nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. And I, I forgot to mention that our budget analyst, Jerry Perry, is here and I'll ask him to comment on this one in the previous public hearing also before we close them. Mr. Ales, on order number thirty-seven.
Sure, thank you. This is a, a transfer request for two million dollars coming from the city's certified free cash balance into the police station project budget. You're all aware of what's going on on Elliot Street and that building's looking better and better every day. The price tag on that is about twenty-nine million dollar building, just shy of twenty-nine million dollars. We always have had a target of twenty-four million dollars for a borrowing budget on that. And that is because that is the debt service figure that fits into our annual operating budget. And so in order to hit that twenty-four million dollars in borrowing, we have had to, over the past three years now, infuse cash into the project and pay down the debt. So this is the last step in doing that. And in fact, we hope to borrow for the remainder of the project later this month, in March, because interest rates are at all-time record lows. So now is the perfect time to have this discussion. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about the transfer.
Questions for Mr. Ales about this transfer? Okay, let's go to Mr. Perry. Mr. Perry, our budget analyst, you've been silent tonight because I forgot to call on you.
It broke my heart, Mr. President. Good evening, everybody.
I know you, I mean, like, I know a couple of your family members that'll say that, you know, Mr. Perry never met a microphone he didn't like, but I'm the same.
That is absolutely correct, Mr. President. But good evening, everybody. I'll be a little bit brief, but I would like to make a couple of quick comments. As Mr. Ales indicated, this is over three years, but the reality is this plan that was put into place started literally four years ago with some dialogue in Mr. Ales' office. It was, it was literally on a smart board trying to figure out the numbers and cranking them out here. So first and foremost, I do recommend this. It's a strong, it's a great idea. The continuity of this has been really unique in that you don't see this in a lot of other communities. We've been, had stability both with our financial officials, a lot of the councillors and the mayor, and they've been able to stick to a long-range plan here. So I want to take the opportunity to commend both past and present members of the city council for sticking to this. It has been a long event. Thank the mayor for that. But more importantly, even though he's going to not like what I'm about to say, but Mr. Ales really did an incredible amount of work on this, his strategy of trying to put this together over a four-year period to, it's not just doing this, it's all the budget stuff that goes behind the scenes and trying to make certain line items go on. And I'm really pleased and tickled the death watching the work that he did. So I really commend his efforts over the years. I'm sure he'll kill me for saying that. But having said that, Mr. President, I strongly endorse the recommendation of the mayor on this. It's a great idea. And I'm looking forward to seeing the ribbon cutting of this new police station. I'm more than happy to answer any questions anybody might have.
Any questions for Mr. Ales? Counselor, Counselor Copeland?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Just a quick question, just so I make sure I have it, have it correct in my mind. So we're looking at around twenty-nine million total. We're going to pay off five million of that, borrow twenty-four million for the balance. And that'll put us in line with what we want to be budget-wise, but also take advantage of historically low interest rates for the time being. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes.
And will it make sense for us to pay down any more of that or is that kind of the, the place that we want to be in?
That's the amount that's affordable in terms of carrying that debt load. And it's affordable in the very near term. The next two years is really where we have the debt budget pinch. And we know we can layer this amount in there and still balance a budget. After that two years, what happens is an older debt falls off of our debt payment schedule and creates additional capacity to then begin to layer in some of these other larger projects that are in the capital plan. So this isn't, as Mr. Perry said, this isn't a kind of one-off. This is a long-range, multi-year plan to try to address some real needs in the city that have huge price tags to them. First, it was the middle school at a hundred and ten million. Right on the heels of that was the police station at thirty million. And pretty soon, we're going to be talking about, once the police move out, City Hall is next in line, the DPW. City Hall is next in line, the DPW campus is, there are needs there, and those are big, big items. So we need to make sure we leave capacity in the debt budget to be able to layer those into and keep pecking away at some of this backlog that we've seen.
That's perfect. Thank you. And I just wanted to, wanted to hear it explained also for anyone listening as well, that there's an overall strategy and a flow to that whole process. So, so thank you for explaining that. Appreciate it.
Council Copeland, Council Housman.
Uh, yeah, just to follow up on Council Copeland's question, I was trying to dig up on my hard drive before he called on me. Didn't quite get there. Mr. Perry, can you refresh my memory and just discuss a little bit? Following up on Mr. Ailes' comment about sort of the bulge in the budget, what we have in the financial policies and objectives in terms of the range of, of debt that we want to carry on as a percentage of our budget? And how, excuse me, how the 25 million that the police station financing represents will affect that, that proportion? And Mr. Ailes, if you want to jump in, that's fine as well, obviously.
Sure, I'm sure Brian can handle it too. Is, is Brian indicated be a little bit of a pinch over the next couple of years? We're going to get a little over 8%, I believe, of our overall general fund debt ratio to overall, overall overall general fund revenues and expenditures. So there will be a little tightness there, but, and I know that the administration is working currently to update the capital expenditure plan, which a few veteran city councils know, I review that and take a look at that and then build that and make sure, you know, I think we're, the bottom line to it is it will be a little bit high, especially with the middle school. Brian is optimistic and I agree with him that with the interest rates being low, and I completely agree with him, I think, you know, going to market in the next month or so is a wise decision. Bottom line to it, as you know, Council Housman, from your chairing the Financial Forecast Committee, you've seen that a little bit of a spike there in the debt, but we're confident we're going to bring it down. And actually, we may even do better with the difference with the interest rates we're going to see over the next month. So I'm, I'm confident, I'm comfortable. And the other thing I'll say, believe it or not, you have no idea how many times I've been asked by officials outside the city, how the heck did the city of Beverly do this? And it goes right back to a lot of long-range planning done by Mr. Ailes and others, yourself, Council Housman, as well as Councilor Ames on the Financial Forecast Committee. We're good, we're there, a little over 8%. I'm confident and I think it's a job well done by the, everybody involved.
If I may follow up, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Ailes, I see you started.
I was just going to add that I believe, off the top of my head, the policies call for a ceiling of 9%. I think we, we put in there. And this will ultimately put us at about 7.6%.
So I, I mentioned this when, when we went with the mayor and sort of small group meetings to sort of go through this, you know, these, these transactions a bit. Interest rates are at a historic low. We have sort of a defined range within our financial policies and objectives for debt. You've mentioned that we have sort of a, maybe a little like a two-year bulge or squeeze here around what we want to do. But I encourage the administration to take a look and see, given what interest rates are at, whether we ought to perhaps consider being a little ambitious about where we want to be in that range to take advantage of, you know, what, what's available in the bond market for some of our capital improvement projects that, you know, maybe have been languishing. I mean, obviously, you know, the financial policies and objectives get us where we're at, where we have both, you know, resiliencies, stability, flexibility. And we don't want to imperil that. But to the degree that we can take advantage of, of something that's not going to reoccur, presumably, to be, you know, whether it's a discussion about, you know, you know, roads and sidewalks, whether it's some of the other capital expenditure items in the plan, just to take a look at that and see if, if we have some opportunities here, notwithstanding the bulge or the, you know, the squeeze that Mr. Perry referred to. And just take a look at it. I mean, I think it's at least a discussion worth having, even if the conclusion is, no, we're good where we're at. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ailes, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, I just would, um, just, so everyone's aware, there are certain laws that govern our ability to borrow. We are not able to maintain cash on hand because it's tax-exempt borrowings. There are IRS implications to us having cash on hand for periods of time. So we typically borrow on the tail end of, of projects. So we couldn't, for instance, front-load, you know, go out and borrow $30 million just to keep here and kind of spend as we, as we felt, you know, we needed it. That's not an option. In terms of the benefit of the, the interest rates, the way they are right now, what you'll see, and you're very familiar with this, Council Housman, the financial forecast that we prepared months ago is now beginning to look a lot rosier than it did when we did it last. I shouldn't say use the term rosier, but that large deficit we were facing is now beginning to kind of come down a bit because of the opportunity that presents itself in the interest market right now. We'll know a lot more next month and I'll have much more concrete numbers to share with you all, if you, if you would like to go through them, to show you kind of where the capacity is to begin to layer in additional debt. But I think what you'll find is that some of the needs that are outlined in the mayor's capital expenditure plan will now begin to kind of get closer in timeline because we're able to pull them forward a little quicker after we get through this bulge.
Yeah, just to clarify, I was never suggesting that we ought to, you know, borrow to put money into a savings account. That, you know, directly speaking about things that are already in the plans that to borrow an old somewhat hackneyed phrase, you know, shovel-ready. Anyway, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on order number 37? Do any members of the public, if you're still here, would like to comment on this agenda item? If you are, type your name and your address in.
Mr. President, can I just give a quick update on the project?
Oh, I saw you, I saw you leave and I didn't know you came back. Thank you, of course, Chief.
My computer crashed, sorry. Just really quick heads up, letting everybody know we are on schedule, on budget. Probably going to be there every day for the next few months, following up on things, but we're progressing very well.
That was it?
Go to sleep.
All right, any, I'm going to open it up now. Any questions for Chief Lausher? Woo, all right. Thank you, Chief. Keep up the good work and, you know, anything comes up, please keep us updated.
Hopefully, we're going to be able to do some torsion.
Great. So I would, I'll close our public hearing and ask for a motion to approve the request on order number 37.
Some of them will. Second.
Second.
And roll call.
Ames.
Yes.
Copeland.
Yes.
Talman.
Yeah.
Flaherty.
Yes.
Flowers.
Yes.
Housman.
Yes.
Rand.
Yes.
Rotundo.
Yes.
And Quancy.
Yes. I would entertain a motion to return back to, to return to our public hearing that was scheduled May 15 on order number 36.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
And a roll call.
Ames. Copeland.
Yes.
Talman. Flaherty.
Yeah.
Yes.
Flowers.
Yes.
Housman.
Yes.
Rand.
Yes.
Rotundo.
Yes.
And Quancy.
Yes, and Councilor Copeland, you have the floor.
All right, thank you, Council President. This one was for Mr. Ailes or Mr. Perry as well. So with the, the OPEB fund, you said we have a 30, a $330 million liability potentially coming up. Now, how, how is that determined? Is that basically just the number of people in retirement that potentially might be using those services and that's what we're looking at or?
Mr. Ailes, do you want me to do it?
If you, if you'd like to.
I want to talk about this.
You jumped right off. Thank you, man.
Thanks, Mr. President. So we, we have to fully fund our pension fund. Similarly, there's this sense that sometime in the future, we're going to be told we have to fully fund to meet our OPEB obligation. There's this sense that if municipal government someday closed, never to reopen the doors, we would have to have money in the bank to pay. Well, certainly with the pension fund, that's the thought. We'd have to have money in the bank to pay pensions for everybody who was at that time working and already retired, following actuarial tables right out to everyone's death or the death of a surviving spouse. There's a similar mindset, I think, around these post-employment healthcare benefits. And I'll stop there because, you know, right now, we're, we're just trying to make, I think, we're trying to make a good faith payment annually on OPEB, really to, to say, you know, we're mindful of it. But I, you know, I can't imagine, right now, that, you know, the state and federal government require that we increase our budget each year by roughly four and a half percent on the pension side on a schedule to fully fund our pension system. I can't imagine that kind of a mandate would come our way before we're done fully funding pensions, but the, the finance experts here, Mr. Ailes and Mr. Perry, might have another thought on that. That, that's how I understand it, Counselor.
Yeah, the, I, I would add that the, the actual liability gets calculated by actuaries. People way smarter than me that sit down and they look at mortality tables, they look at demographics, they look at socioeconomic trends in the region. They look at all these things. They look at the current age of the population that's employed with the city, current age of the retirees, their survive, potential surviving spouses, and they calculate what it's going to cost to provide healthcare for those individuals for the amount of time that they're entitled under the law. That's it in a nutshell. The only other piece I would add to the mayor's comments is if you were to read the state's rating reports. So every time the city goes and tries to borrow money or issue municipal bonds, we get a ratings report, typically from Standard and Poor's, sometimes it can be from Moody's. But Standard and Poor's releases this report and they check these boxes saying that the city's doing great in its budget performance. The city's doing great with its management of, of its finances. The city's doing great in so many of these areas, budgetary flexibility, reserves. But the one area that we continue to get hammered on is our outstanding liabilities. And they want us to take this seriously and they want us as a community to begin to pay down these large liabilities that exist on our books. Granted, to the mayor's point, it's just a, it's a financial snapshot that they're looking at and saying, you've got all these big liabilities. But nonetheless, any effort in that direction helps the city's bond rating, gets us lower interest rates when we go to market.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was just going to add one more final thing to both, I agree with everything with both the mayor and Brian said. The high probability they're never going to require you to fully fund OPEB. If we had to do that nationwide, government at the federal, state, local level will go bankrupt. It's just not going to happen. They are going to require us to fully fund our pension liability in the year 20, I think, in Beverly 2033, I believe it is. But don't, I wouldn't worry about that, but Mr. Ailes is spot on. This is protecting our bond rating by doing this, and that's why we incorporated this as part of our financial policy. So I, don't lose sleep over it. We'll never get to the 330, I promise.
That makes sense. Thank, thank you for that explanation. I get it. It's just, just like with your personal credit, if you have too many credit cards with, you know, a long line of potential credit that you can borrow against, it becomes more of a liability and a negative on your credit. So I understand. Thank you. And one other quick question was in regards to the, the free cash. And you talked about some of the free cash can be used towards additional road and sidewalk funding. Now, are those also one-time projects or how does that work? Just so when I'm speaking with constituents and, and, you know, we're going back and forth about it, have a better understanding of it.
Yeah. It, it meets the criteria that are the ideal uses of free cash, where it's one-time in nature, meaning you're going to address a specific need or a specific project with some funds. It was noted on the list of things we've used it for in the past because I believe there was, it might have been 2017, where we had a healthy free cash number. And the needs, as they always are, are great for our roads and sidewalk repair. And we needed some money infused into the, the highway fund or the road and sidewalk fund in order to begin on some projects related to some intersection work. I believe that might have been what it was. And so we pushed, I believe it was about a half a million dollars more into the fund that year once we knew the funds were available. We didn't want to do a premature in the budget, but once they were available, we, we pushed it over.
All right, and, and just so I have a clear understanding of it, so that's, that'll fall indifferent between what we consider the, the normal road work that we always have ongoing. So those would be more the one-time projects and so forth that we can use cash into. Or is that a little different?
Go ahead, man.
So each, each year, Counselor, we, we find we're able to count on the state to send about a million dollars our way of our Chapter 90 money. Right? And that, that, that's money that comes back from the feds out of the, the gas tax, right? So it's money comes back to cities and towns. We get about a million there. We have been able to put between a million and 2 million additional each year. It's varied based on the year in a city appropriation in the operating budget. So we've spent between $2 and $3 million a year over the last seven budgets on road and sidewalk work. This free cash kind of infusion that year, I think, you, you mentioned, Mr. Ailes, I think it was the design work on the, on the Centerville Roundabout is what it was, yeah. So, you know, it's also one-time. It's, it's all one-time. I mean, you know, you, you do road and sidewalk work, you're going to get back to it again someday, but not for decades, right? So it's, it's considered one-time in that sense. It's not a recurring in that it shows up in the next year's operating budget and again. Right?
Yep. All right. Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Counselor, I think we have, Council Rotundo has a question.
Mr. President, I promise to keep it within the scope of what we're talking of, OPEB and pension. We know the liability. You actually did kind of answer the questions that I had, were going to ask. But I know you've adopted the policy of the 10% for free cash to go into the stabilization fund to stay with the increase of the budget as well as showing good faith for OPEB. Would it be advantageous if there were ever consideration, and I think this would go to Mr. Perry as well as you, Mr. Ailes, putting more into OPEB, would it benefit the bond rating or would it really not make a significant difference? And just stay with the policy you have in place?
All right, go ahead, Brian. I'm sorry.
I, I was going to say, if this, if this approval, if this gets approved this evening, we'll have $1.5 million in a fund on a $330 million liability. So, you know, you can see the, the ratio, even if we were to throw an extra million or two, it's really not going to move the needle any level of, you know, materiality.
And I would agree with that, Council Rotundo. The 2% when we wrote the policies a couple of years ago was looked favorably upon the rating agencies, but to put anything else more in there, given the magnitude of it, I, I just, I would not recommend it. We're basically paying as you're going, but we have this little fund balance in there in case we get in deep trouble someday if there's a spike. So I, I would recommend we just keep, keep going as we are, and I think that's the right approach.
Ultimately, just to follow on that, ultimately, when the pension liability is fully funded, at that point in time, we're scheduled to be throwing 14 to 15 million dollars a year into the pension obligation. When that goes away, this money can then be rediverted over to the OPEB and begin to, to really address that need in a meaningful way. Plus, we don't know what the laws are going to say by that point.
That's, that's 12 fiscal years away, right?
Right.
Ish. It's a moving target sometimes, but that's the, that's the, the schedule.
2035. It's getting here quick. Who else is here? Oh, Council Flaherty.
Yes, I'll just be brief. I just wanted to kind of comment on, I understand what Council Ames was going. But I also wanted to, you know, having been here for a number of years, you know, when you're doing this budget, you know, over $100 million plus, it's, it's not necessarily scientific all the time. And I would say to argue that if we needed to have money out of unforeseen, we can, if I went to the mayor for any health concern, I think, you know, we as a council would, I don't think we've ever been like turned down for something like that if it was a health crisis. But I also want to make a comment that our bond rating is so good in the city over the past 20 years for the reason why, because of the way we budget and the way we go about business. And I feel pretty good about that. And if we weren't as healthy as a community, our bond rating would not be as good. I understand where Council Ames is going, but I just kind of wanted to say that. I appreciate where she's coming from. But the idea of, you know, with our bond rating being so good and where we're at, I feel very comfortable. so good and where we're at, I feel very comfortable in how we go about things. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Counsel, yeah, Counsel Ailes, no, Mr. Ailes.
Thank you. I just want to kind of add a perspective, not to belabor this because it's getting late, but, you know, last year aside, when we intentionally were turning back funds in preparation for potential revenue shortfalls, if you take that out of the equation, a typical year, we're turning back about $500,000. That's less than one-third of 1%, one-third of 1% of our budget. So we're not way out of whack in our budget, that's a pretty tight budget. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. Anybody else on order number 36? All right, hearing no, any members of the public still with us that would like to comment on this? Three, two, one. Hearing no further questions or comments, I'll close this public hearing and entertain a motion to approve the administration's request.
So moved, second.
Roll call.
Ames.
Yes.
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi.
Yes. Nice work on all those public hearings, great questions and great answers. Let's go to order number 43.
Order number 43. Dear Honorable City Council, attaches the memorandum from Finance Director Brian Ailes, seeking authorization to apply bond premiums that the city may receive to projects authorized prior to the enactment of the Municipal Modernization Act. Language suggested is consistent with more recent loan authorizations and comes under the advisement of the city's bond council in anticipation of upcoming middle school borrowing expected to take place this March. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Kehlmeier.
Thank you. Mr. Ailes.
Thank you again. This is a ministerial request that our bond council, we hire legal experts in the field of finance, sorry, municipal finance, that help advise us around our borrowings. Prior to the Municipal Modernization Act, this language never existed in our loan authorizations, particularly the one we are most looking at is the middle school, because later this month, we're looking to wrap up the borrowing for the middle school project. And in order to do that, we need to be able to apply premiums that we may receive from the successful bidding bank to the project to pay down the overall debt service and get it in line with what a net interest rate bid would look like. There's a lot there that I'm talking about, but basically, when we go to the market, some companies or some banks will pay us cash upfront. And they may have coupon rates on the bonds that are 3% or 4%, and then they front-load a bunch of cash to the city. We need to use that cash to pay down the amount we're going to borrow. That's effectively what we're asking for.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. Counsel Houseman?
Yeah, this may be a somewhat nerdy question, but for Mr. Ailes, excuse me, the language in this proposed order talks about voting to supplement each prior order of the council. The way I read that or understand that is, that goes back in time indefinitely, it goes back in time for as long as council's been doing this. So my question is, is that how you read it, is that what you mean? And if it does, I would just be really interested in some of the data on some of the, you know, I don't know, five years back worth or something like that, on these premiums that have come back to us, just as a matter of, you know, curiosity I get, I guess, in terms of helping me understand a little bit what the materiality is of those amounts.
So it is a blanket order, however, the vast majority of the previous orders have already been borrowed for, and right now, we're really only going to market for the middle school appropriation. That's the really, that's the one we're focused on. Our attorneys advised us to do it as a blanket order, just in case there's another one, maybe a water order or something that we need to reborrow for later on, we've got the language in there.
Yeah, I understand that this is specifically addressing the borrowing before us right now, but the language doesn't limit it to that, it limits to, as I read it, every prior order of the council, without any time limitation.
Right, and most of that is water under the bridge already.
Yeah, yeah, it's historical data, yeah, that's what, and that's really what I'm asking about, is historical.
Yeah, this is a more recent occurrence. We, you know, 10 years ago, 15 years ago, it wasn't as common practice to be seeing such large premiums come to a municipality. But the last two to three borrowings I've done, we've seen premiums coming back in upfront cash payments of like 2 million bucks. And so that either has to go to the general fund and be certified into free cash, and if we do that, we have a higher interest rate on the borrowing. So if we use that, rather than putting it back to free cash to pay down the debt, you bring down the total cost to the city on its debt payments, and ultimately having an effective interest rate that's significantly lower than what the coupon rate may be on a municipal bond.
Yeah, essentially reinvesting. Yeah, yeah, thank you, I'm interested in Mr. Perry's comments on this as well, thank you.
He left his hand up, so he's ready to go. Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mr. President, yeah. I mean, the real nexus of this is the change in the regs there in 2017. Actually, I was, in my prior life, pretty involved with this stuff back in 2012, 2013, these bond premiums. Bottom line to it, bond, it's a very, as Counsel Houseman probably, more than anybody as an attorney can understand, these bond council work is very unique, and they're very careful to do that. It is a catch-all to protect the city, to get everything prior to 2017. I don't think there's much out there, it is mostly the middle school, but if something else is there, we don't have to keep coming back to the city council to do it. The bottom line to it, it will save the taxpayers money, it will reduce either cost of issuances or the principal, and it does have my strong recommendation for the council to pass it. It's a wise decision. I'm sure we all understand that, and I appreciate Counsel Houseman's questions on these things because he's usually spot on on this stuff anyways. But it's a good idea to do this, and I encourage the council to adopt it.
Yeah, if I may just, I'm certainly in favor of it, I agree that it's a good policy, I'm just interested in the data, thank you.
Anybody else on order number 43? I would entertain a motion to approve the Finance Director's request.
So moved, second.
Roll call, please.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes.
Let's move on to order number 44, please.
Order number 44. Dear Honorable City Council, I respectfully request your approval of loan authorization of $750,000 to facilitate replacement of the turf field at the Beverly High School campus. As you know, the original turf surface in Illeville were installed in 2010, and the synthetic turf has now reached the end of its service life. Additionally, technology has made considerate progress in our installation of the middle school turf, has proven that products now available are safe for our athletes, more environmentally friendly, and may provide longer use life than the technology during the original high school turf field installation. Approval of this loan authorization will allow us to legally begin the work and hopefully minimize the impact to playing seasons by striving to complete the work this summer. It's our intent to return to the city council this fall upon certification of 6/30/2021 free cash to rescind this loan and transfer free cash in lieu at that time. This method will allow us to perform the work as soon as possible, protect the fund balance, but not drawing any additional free cash this fiscal year, and ultimately avoid paying any borrowing costs. The order must be published at least 10 days prior to final passage, should we be referred to the Committee on Finance and Property for a report thereon and requires a public hearing. Whereas the order authorizes the issue of bonds, it will require a two-thirds vote of all the members of the city council. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Kehlmeier.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. I would entertain a motion to set a public hearing for Monday, March 15, at 7:15 PM.
So moved. Second.
Anna roll call, Ms. Kent.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes.
We are on order number 45.
Does this have to be referred to Finance and Property as well, or after that?
No.
Okay.
Instead of public hearing, we're good.
Okay. Order number 45. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has been awarded an $18,500 grant from the Massachusetts Cultural Council to support the local cultural council. This public funding is provided to promote education, diversity, inclusion in the arts, humanities, and sciences to foster a rich cultural life for all Mass residents and contribute to the vitality of communities and economy. The Mass Cultural Council receives funding from the Mass Legislature and the National Endowment for the Arts. The local culture council program was established in 1982. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant earmarked donation or gift to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant by taking action on this matter at your upcoming meeting on March 1, 2021. Thank you, sincerely yours, Michael P. Kehlmeier.
And our Director of Grants, Catherine Barrett, is still on the line, would you like to make a comment on this, Ms. Barrett?
Thank you, Council President Guanxi. Yes, this is the annual allotment from the Mass Cultural Council to our local cultural council in Beverly of $18,500. It hovers right around that amount each year, and I hope that you'll approve this.
Thank you, and Ms. Nguyen is on the memo also. Ms. Nguyen, do you have a comment on this one?
I don't actually, this isn't something that we typically oversee, the money goes right to the local cultural council, and they award their annual grant, so it's more of an administrative process, so it doesn't fall under us necessarily.
No, thank you, I like to change up the screen, too, it's always good to see.
Flashback in and out.
Questions is every now and then. All right, any questions for Ms. Barrett? Hearing no further questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to approve and accept the grant.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Order number 46.
Order number 46. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has been awarded a $108,046 FY 2021 911 Department Training Grant from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security Office of Grants and Research. This grant funding will be used by the Beverly Police Department for 911 training courses and overtime cost coverage, as well as for training meeting space. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant earmarked donation or gifts to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant by taking action on this matter at the upcoming meeting on March 1, 2021. Thank you, sincerely yours, Michael P. Kehlmeier.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Ms. Barrett?
Thank you, President Guanxi. This is one of our two annual 911 grants that benefit the police department. This one is the grant, and we're closely with Sergeant Jeff Tache on this grant, as well as the support and incentive grant. And I believe Chief LaLasher is still with us, I don't know if he wants to add a comment.
He is, chief. Oh, he just got bumped out.
I hope I didn't say anything. But again, these are our 911 annual grants that we receive, so I hope that you'll approve these.
You said any questions, and no, chief, you're back.
Sorry, keep hitting the wrong button here. This is a reimbursement grant, so this is money we get that reimburses training that we already go through. It's EOPs, it gets 24 hours of this 911 training to operate the system. So this is really additional money coming to the city, but it's reimbursed money.
Thanks, chief. Any questions or comments on this grant? Thank you. Hearing no further questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to approve order number 46 and accept the grant.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Anna roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi.
Yes.
Number 47, order 47.
47. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has been awarded a $163,964 FY 21 911 Support and Incentive Grant from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security Office of Grants and Research. This grant funding will be used by the Beverly Police Department to assist public safety dispatch services in providing enhanced 911 service. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant earmarked donation or gift to the city can be extended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant by taking action on this matter at your upcoming meeting on March 1, 2021. Thank you, sincerely yours, Michael P. Kehlmeier.
Ms. Barrett?
Thank you, President Guanxi. This is the second of the 911 grants that benefit the police department, this is the support and incentive grant. Again, I do work with Sergeant Jeff Tache on this grant, and I don't know if Chief LaLasher wants to add in a few comments about this one as well.
Yes, this money is used for different purposes, it's actually unrestricted money, a lot of it comes from the use of cell phones. So we take all of our cell phone calls directly, any cell 911 calls made within the city, we get basically $26,000 for handling that. Each city in town gets a certain amount of money from EOPs based on population, so that's where the rest of that comes from. We use it to buy bulletproof vests, helmets, items for the crewmers, AEDs, all that type of equipment we come to put in each cruiser comes to this type of grant.
Questions for the chief of Ms. Barrett? Hearing no questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to approve order number 47 and accept the grant.
So moved. Second.
Anna roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes.
Order number 48.
Order number 48. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby appoint, subject to your review and recommendation, Mr. Lev Sobkolowski at 23 Wood Grove Ave., Newton, Mass., to serve as constable in the city of Beverly for the express purpose of civil service process. Attaches Mr. Sobkolowski's application, which has been approved by Police Chief John LaLacher. His term will be effective from March 16, 2021 until March 16, 2024. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Kehlmeier.
Ms. Kent, great job on the name.
Thank you.
Very, very helpful, so now I think that it just must be Italian names you have a problem with.
Yes.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs. Order number 52.
Order number 52. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has been awarded a $140,000 dredging design and permitting grant from the Mass Seaport Economic Council. The city is seeking to identify a suitable dredge sediment disposal option for the Bass River Maintenance Dredging Project. This grant funding will be used for a feasible study to evaluate the initial feasibility of constructing a confined aquatic disposal cell within the limits of Bass River to permanently contain dredge sediments through a combined desktop study and field investigation approach. The Bass River Maintenance Dredging Project will store safe and reliable navigation within the river system to preserve and grow commercial and recreation floating. This dredging has been delayed until it's economically viable and environmentally sound solution can be obtained for the disposal of river sediments. Dredge sediments have been determined to be unsuitable for unconfined offshore disposal at The Bass River Maintenance Dredging Project will store safe and reliable navigation within the river system to preserve and grow commercial and recreation floating. This dredging has been delayed until it's economically viable and environmentally sound solution can be obtained for the disposal of river sediments. Dredged sediments have been determined to be unsuitable for unconfined offshore disposal at the Mass Bay disposal sites. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both City Council and Mayor approval before any grant earmarked, donation, or gift to the city can be extended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the City Council approve this grant by taking action on this matter at your meeting on March 1st, 2021. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Ms. Barrett?
Thank you, President Guanci. I'll say a few words, and then perhaps Mayor Cahill wants to chime in and say a few things as well. The Bass River dredging project has been like a roller coaster ride or a long and winding road. And Lieutenant Governor Polito announced on Thursday that Beverly had been awarded the $140,000 grant from the Seaport Economic Council. I just want to recognize a lot of people that have been involved in this project. Denise DeChamps and Darlene Nguyen from our planning department, David Gellino, our purchasing agent, Mike Collins and Eric Barber from Public Services and Engineering, along with Harbor Management Authority members, Don Newman and Paul Earl, and also Stephanie Williams, our solicitor, and Brian Ailes, and obviously the mayor. We're really thrilled to get this grant to do the study for the CAD cell. The Bass River hasn't been dredged in well over 60 years and desperately needs to be dredged, so we're really thrilled about this grant award, and I'll pass it off to the mayor for a few words.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Merrick Hale?
Thanks, Ms. Barrett, for touching all the bases. I mean, this is a way to figure out whether a CAD cell's feasible, right? That's the point of the grant. We're hoping that it will show that. In the most layman of terms, a CAD cell is when you can identify a place where you can dig under the riverbed or the harbor bed. We've got to look within our own waters, but we're going to first look within the river. If you can dig deeply enough, you can pull out the clean soil, dispose of that anywhere, and then you create a space under the ground. There's an infrastructure in place. And what you do is you dredge out the contaminated materials that you can't put elsewhere, and you bury them under the riverbed, and then you cover it over with clean fill. So you've essentially safely disposed of it under the, you know, the river, the ocean's bed. And that's the goal, that's the hope. You know, it's been frustrating. We, you know, as you remember, we had federal approvals, we had the permit, we went after state funding, the state relied on that federal permit, we relied on it. And then at the very last minute, literally in December of 2019, when we were ready to start dredging, the Army Corps of Engineers said, "Hey, we're not going to give you your dumping coordinates." We made a mistake. That's what they said. Unfortunately, they should not have given us the permit in the first place. The sediments aren't clean enough to dispose of at the open water ocean dump site. So at the last minute, everything flipped on us. We're trying to figure out how to do this, and hopefully this feasibility study will help us find our way to yes on a CAD cell, which would then be a longer process because a CAD cell costs significant money to create, to permit and create, and then we'd still have to secure dredge funding again. But it does keep it alive for now, and hopefully we'll find our way to doing it over time with this option, with this method.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill. Councilor Houseman?
Yeah, two questions for whoever in the administration wants to pick it up. One is if we could get the council to get a status report on the lawsuit related to the dredging contractor, where that stands. A lot of innocent parties here sort of pointing fingers at each other. The other is, as someone who's somewhat familiar with the Bass River basin, perhaps you give me some insight as to, I gather there must be a prospective notion that there is some area within the basin where this CAD cell could be dug, and the basin isn't all that large. So I'm just curious as to what kind of discussions there have been about, you know, the prospective locations that this study is going to take a look at. I suppose that's what I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. For the first question, as you know, we can't discuss pending litigation, so unfortunately not able to share any details, just to say that it continues to be pending. On your second question, you know, it's not far away that we were able to build a geothermal system under the new police station. So the hope is that bedrock is deep enough under the riverbed that there's an opportunity within the, you know, within the river itself. As far as exactly where, I couldn't say. I think that's part of the feasibility process, feasibility study process, which, as I said, we'll look first within the river, and then if can't find a suitable site within the river, then we'll look outside the river, again, within the city's waters. Hope that's helpful.
Yeah, thank you. I just, I was hoping to hear that maybe there'd been a settlement, but apparently not. Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilor Rand?
Thank you. I just wanted to share that it's been great serving on the Harbor Management Authority because we kind of are constantly immersed in this conversation, and I still have a lot to learn about CAD cells. I do think that it's a really important study to undertake and potentially has, could produce a revenue stream for the city in addition to being helpful in supporting dredging our Bass River. So I support this. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor.
Could I say, I should have said before, that the Harbor Management Authority has been fantastic. Chairman Earl and Don Newman, and they've carried this issue, the dredging issue, for many years, and really, you know, deserve some thanks. And I didn't, I didn't mean to come across as saying that the project is not doable if the CAD cell is feasible. I want to just give you a ballpark that we were given. Anywhere from $3 to $5 million to permit and create the CAD cell. And if you remember, the dredging would have been about $3 million. It's just to say that, you know, we will need to go about finding the different sources to help fund that if we do find that it's a feasible way to go about it. And the fact that it hasn't been dredged, really, I think it's closer to 70 years. It really cries out for us to find a solution over the next handful of several years. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill. That sounds like a great job for our Director of Grants to go out and find that $3.3 to $5 million to get that taken care of.
I'm working on it, Council President.
Just checking. Anybody else? Hearing no further questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to approve order number 52 and accept the grant. Please.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Copeland?
Ames? Copeland?
Yes.
Felman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Cahill, for all of that. That was a lot from your office today. Appreciate all your comments and answering our questions. Communications from other city offices and boards?
Order number 49 from Evelyn Hutchins, the Assistant Planning Director, is the 2020 Beverly Historic Preservation Plan. I sent you all the plan, and the plan was available at our office, at the City Clerk's, and on the website. It was really thick.
Yes. I tried to steal the only copy that Martha Lewis had last Thursday, and she caught me walking out the door with it.
So did I.
I know, I know I need to get more online, but papers is old school. I got to get over it. Ms. Hutchins, you're here somewhere. Emily, would you like to talk about this for a few minutes?
I would love to. I actually do have a presentation.
Oh, great.
If you indulge me. Hold on one moment, I can put it up. All right, here we go. Put it in present. So I'll try to go through this very briefly. So the Historic Preservation Plan was developed in conjunction with preparation of Plan Beverly. And as a recommended task of Plan Beverly, the primary purposes of a preservation plan are to recognize a city's historic resources and the impact they have on a city, on a community's physical character and quality of life, and also to develop methods to celebrate and protect a city's heritage. So historic preservation provides a lot of fantastic assets to the community. It adds to community character. It demonstrates what makes a community unique. It brings economic development. People are attracted to places with a unique style. They tend to feel more personal connections and be interested in establishing businesses, residing in these communities, and visiting and being tourists in these communities. It's environmentally friendly. It is far more environmentally friendly to adaptively reuse an existing building than to demolish a historic building or just an older building and then build something new. And it builds relationships. History stories really do bring people together, build connections, and create enthusiasm. So the Historic Preservation Plan was developed over approximately one year, starting with collection of background information. In December of 2019, extensive outreach occurred. We developed a citywide survey that was taken by over 580 people. This part of the plan really extended a lot longer than we had anticipated due to the pandemic, but it did enable us to, we think, reach more people, engage more people of unique backgrounds, hold interviews. We held an equity focus group in August or September. And then finally, the development of recommendations and the completion of the final plan that was approved in December by the Massachusetts Historical Commission. So the outline of the preservation plan, it is five chapters. It is a long plan, but there's a lot of good meat there. So Chapter 1 is just an executive summary that was meant to serve as a standalone document. Chapters 2 and 3 provide an introduction to preservation planning and Beverly, and an analysis of our existing historic resources and our programs to protect those resources. Chapter 4 is really where you get to the meat of the plan. It includes the vision, guiding principles, and it looks at each of our city's programs, our assets, and provides recommendations on how we can improve and protect our historic resources. Chapter 5 is the action plan, and it's effectively one long spreadsheet that includes our list of recommendations, including like potential priorities, partners or leaders who would be involved in implementation, and other information such as grant funding that could be accessed, the cost of different actions, et cetera. So some key recommendations. The first one, which is one we've really jumped into right now, is becoming a certified local government. Becoming a certified local government is a more basic part of historic preservation in Massachusetts. It effectively involves the city formally stating that they've made a commitment to historic preservation, and through designation, you're opened up to additional grant and funding opportunities for different projects. Continuing to strengthen the Historic Districts Commission in both the role as a Historic Districts Commission managing the Bishop Lake Hill Local Historic District and as a Historical Commission to proactively engage with the city and encourage historic preservation. Identity and storytelling. One of the recommendations is to establish a community-wide interpretive program and to really coordinate with different community members, different nonprofits and organizations to share Beverly's history and stories. Coordinating with neighborhood organizations, to engage with community members, support property owners who own historic buildings, and again, share Beverly's history. Continue our historic property inventory. We have an extensive inventory of our historic properties already. I believe we have over 1,000 of our resources that have already been inventoried. But continuing to do that will ensure that we have information when we go to protect a historic resource, when we go to look at what needs to be done in our historic neighborhoods and how we can tell stories. The same thing goes for neighborhood planning, is looking at what makes neighborhoods unique, what characteristics really add to the distinctive nature of neighborhoods, and continuing to improve quality of life. Local historic districts, we already have one. It's our Bishop Lake Hill Local Historic District. But that, local historic districts provide a level of protection for historic resources. It means that before you make a change to a historic building that is visible from a public way, you need to get approval from the Historic Districts Commission and make sure that it is a historically appropriate change if it is a historic building. Conservation districts are a somewhat less restrictive version of local historic districts. It is a different state law, but they are created to effectively stop the worst of the worst. So it won't necessarily halt altering of some smaller historic fabric, but it might encourage property owners to put siding over their historic wood siding, for example, rather than tear the wood siding off, or it will halt the demolition of a historic building. Continuing to encourage local landmarks and single property historic districts, which would protect our unique standalone historic buildings that are not necessarily qualified to be located in a larger district. And continuing to work with the Community Preservation Act, that provides some fantastic funding opportunities. And the Community Preservation Act has already funded a number of excellent historic preservation projects for the city, including inventories, capital improvement projects for buildings such as the G.A.R. Hall, Powderhouse, and a number of historic Beverly projects for their properties as well. And finally, municipal policies and programs. The plan encourages becoming a model, the city becoming a model for stewardship and best practices, and makes recommendations on opportunities we have for zoning and developing historic structures reports, historic landscapes reports for our municipally-owned historic properties. So the next steps, the plan has been approved by the Massachusetts Historical Commission. It's been posted online on the city's website, and there are actually a couple of versions, or not versions, a couple of copies in City Hall, but I apologize, Council President, two or three of them are in the planning department, so you're welcome to come and grab one of those when you happen to have another chance to come by the City Hall. The city Historic Districts Commission has voted to formally adopt the Historic Preservation Plan. It's something that isn't required by state law, but it's certainly considered a benefit and an endorsement. And our next steps are to begin the assessment of the proposed actions and priorities and establish what our next actions are going to be. So with that, I can take any questions that you might have.
Can you, Council President? Can you?
Shoot. Oh, good, I just swore and nobody heard me. Excellent. You emailed us a copy of the document, which was great, and I mean, that is definitely more echo-friendly. I have, Council Flaherty has a question for you, Ms. Hutchins.
Yes, I think this is a great document. It talks about the preservation of the whole city, which I think is extremely important. Does it touch base upon, I didn't know, I didn't see it, about when new- Does it touch base upon, I didn't know, I didn't see it, about when new construction is built, does it take into the idea of the historic character of the community?
So new construction is a bit of a unique perspective. Historic preservationists have different perspectives on new construction. Some would prefer they stay within a character that looks more like a historic building and some really do prefer that they look more modern. So it's more of a design question, I would say, than historic preservation. But it does provide recommendations for our historic districts and how new buildings should be established in a complimentary fashion. So the primary goal is not to demolish historic resources and to enable new construction to occur in such a way that continues encouraging the character. So in Cabot Street, that might involve new development that is closer to the sidewalk rather than further away and continue that streetscape that encourages walkability and the standard general character.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. Council Larran?
Thank you. I'm not sure, but Counselor Copeland might have been before me.
Okay, I was looking good. Counselor Copeland, ladies first and then we'll come back. How's that sound?
I'm okay with that. Thank you. I guess I just wanted to ask, well, first of all, I'm so excited to see, obviously, Ward Two has a lot of historic assets in it. And so I'm excited to see this plan and really dive into it. I'm wondering if you could share with me the recommendation that you're the most excited about and the recommendation that you think will have the greatest impact on, I'm gonna stick with Ward Two, on downtown and what that impact might be.
Ooh, you're making me think about this. I'm enthusiastic about recommendations that will open us up to more funding and leveraging our assets. So I think this first step of becoming a certified local government is a fantastic opportunity because it will allow us to continue to apply for additional funding and protect our municipal assets. I always enjoy storytelling. I love hearing local stories. One of the opportunities, so I mentioned, we held an equity workshop as part of our engagement. One of the recommendations is to look for untold stories or lesser-known stories and to support those and promote those, which is very interesting to me because I get to learn about things that I had never previously known about. And it's wonderful for community members to share their backgrounds, their histories.
All set, Council Larran?
Yeah, thank you. Is it, actually, I do have one follow-up question.
Of course.
How intensive is it to become a certified local government?
We've actually already done most of what is required to become a certified local government. We've adopted a 40C district with the Fish Lake Hill Historic District. We've established a Historic Districts Commission and, which doubles as our historical commission. So there effectively are a few more formalities that occur at the municipal level, working with Massachusetts Historical Commission. But we anticipate that we can do that, I'd say, by the end of this fall.
That's exciting. Thank you. Thanks for all your work on this.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes, thank you. So I just wanted to say it's, I was able to view some of the plan. I thought it was excellent, the direction that we're looking to move in. And also, I would love to be a part of the process as you move forward and look at Ward Six. You know, I think there's many great properties and areas there. So I'd love to see kind of what your vision is there and the inventory that you're looking at there as well as you move forward. So overall, I think the plan is a great direction for us to head in and would love to see, think about Ward Six, what you're looking at there.
Thank you, Copeland. Counselor Hausman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, 245 pages. I've been trying to plow through it and I just want to compliment the Planning Department and Ms. Hutchings on the work and just say, I am grateful for the, you know, embracing of the quality of life values that preserving our historic structures and historic culture, you know, brings to the city and hope that this underscores a commitment to embracing adaptive reuse as much as possible when we do have new construction. In particular, I look forward to, Ms. Hutchings and I have been chasing each other for well over a week. I'm looking forward to discussing with her Action Item Number 89 on the list. And hopefully have an opportunity to talk with the mayor about that as well. So I'll try to catch up with you tomorrow if we can get there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Larran?
Thank you very much. I heard you talk a little bit about support perhaps for people who own historic structures in the city, and I think that's a great thing and would love to learn more about that. But nice work, really comprehensive. And I think that for a lot of neighborhoods in Ward Three, I'm hopeful that this will be transformational, but in a really supportive, positive way so that there still can be some housing, entry-level housing for Beverly families. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Larran. Anybody else with any questions or comments? Thank you, Annalyn. Appreciate you being here. And that said, I would entertain a motion to receive that and place it on file.
Move.
Second.
Second.
Yeah, roll call.
King?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rattundo?
Yes.
And Quancy?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Order number 50.
Order number 50. Chelsea Zakis from the Associate Planner, and it's about the condition completion of Brisco Village for Living Arts at 7 Sawyer Road. 51, she was coming.
What? Ms. Zakis is here?
Hi, I am here.
Thank you. What's going on?
Hey, this is a letter that I wrote that is really to just be on file to confirm that conditions were met for the Brisco project. Emily Hutchings was the staff for the Design Review Board when this application process was going through. So she might be able to provide more well-informed answers to specific questions you guys might have.
Okay. Any questions? Ms. Hutchings, do you have anything to add?
No, I think Chelsea's letter covers it quite well. The Design Review Board had recommended that Harbor Light and Beacon Communities go back and look at a few design elements that were specifically for the landscaping and try to make them more traditional in character. They did so and they fulfilled the condition that was adopted by the City Council.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from members of the City Council? It was a pretty nice little package you put together for us, Chelsea. Much appreciated. And just for anybody still watching at home at the 10 o'clock hour, anything that we receive and place on file doesn't go away. It's in the City Clerk's office and you're more than welcome to request a copy, either in person or Ms. Kent would email you a copy. Is that good to say, Ms. Kent?
It is. And I believe the mayor had his hand up?
Did he really?
Yeah, I just want to say, thanking Ms. Zakis. She's been on board for a few months now and we're excited at the work she's doing. And I don't want you to think that Ms. Hutchings, now that the historic plan is done, is just gonna kick her feet up because she's no longer staffing Design Review. Ms. Winn, what do you have Ms. Hutchings doing?
I'm not sure you want the meeting to go that long tonight, but she's also, she's a project manager from our side for the Climate Action Plan, you know, working with Arena on that. She's also now staffing the Planning Board, which is a heavy enough lift. And so, and you know, for better or worse, Emily is running our marijuana shop, for lack of a better word, out of the Planning Department. So that takes, that's the more friendly. We have other nicknames for her, but that's, you know, that's probably the most appropriate for this meeting at this time, so.
I think for everybody, it's helpful to know that Ms. Zakis is now the staff for Design Review and Ms. Hutchings moved over to Planning Board. I think you'll see them in those contexts as well.
Yep.
Great. Thank you for chiming in, Mayor Cahill. I would entertain a motion to receive that and place it on file.
Move.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rattundo?
Yes.
And Quancy?
Yes. Communications, applications and petitions.
Order number 51 is a notice of availability for the former Varian facility site at 150 Sawyer Road.
And that's letting us know that there's an indoor air sampling effort report on file at the Beverly Public Library. Counselor Ames, I know that you're pretty involved in this. Do you want to just give us an update as to where we are in the area? A brief one?
Sure, sure. A brief one. First, I want to thank Counselor Feldman and also the support of the at-large counselors here as well as the mayor. Early on in this process, the D E P and the mayor really worked hard to get tens, like 40-some-odd, I think it was 47 homes, tested with a rapid test. Perhaps not the most specific test, but just to try to get a lay of the land. And from there, the residents have really worked hard to organize themselves and are working with the mayor and local officials to create a technical advisory group and have more extensive in-depth testing going on to try to figure out new maps for where exactly the contamination is today. Most of the testing was 20 years old. And to try to figure out if there are, how severe or not severe the impacts are in the neighborhoods. And hopefully from there, they'll try to figure out some remediation. I think it's a long road to go. I think the residents have done a wonderful job, deserve all our support. As, and I feel generally, all of our elected officials have been very supportive. This area runs down from behind flares, cleaners, pretty much to almost in back of the high school and down Tozer Road, just to understand the geography of the area impacted by the by the contamination from the former Varian site. And most of the testing was 20 years old, so this will be good to get up to date. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ames. The residents of Ward Three are lucky to have you. Appreciate your passion on this issue and always keep us updated, please. So I would entertain a motion to receive that and place it on file.
Move.
Second.
Any roll call, please?
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rattundo?
Yes.
And Quancy?
Yes. We've taken care of unfinished business, so let's move on to reports from committees.
Order number 33, communication for the appointment for Mr. Brendan Sweeney to serve on the Planning Board to fill the term of Allison Kilcoin, who had stepped down.
Questions or comments? I'm gonna open up to Mr. Sweeney because you're here. Do you want to say a few words before we vote on you?
Good to see you guys. I'll keep it brief, but I am very excited for this opportunity. I've met a handful of you already and I'm looking forward to getting to meet those who I have not had the chance to meet one-on-one yet. But for a brief background on myself, I work in state government currently for the Office of Administration and Finance, where I have been for roughly two and a half years. I started as a budget analyst, working on housing and economic development issues as well as education policy. And I now work on administering CARES Act funding and other federal funding to municipalities. I came from local government originally, so I'm very familiar with the weeds of both local and state government. And housing and economic development policy has been an area of interest to mine. Younger resident, I've been in Beverly for about four years. I'm from Ipswich originally, so not too far down the road. And my plan is to stay here long-term, settle in with my fiancee and ultimately raise a family here. So the chance to serve on the Planning Board at such a crucial time in our city's history where we really will be able to chart a pretty definitive path post-COVID for what we want the city to be, the chance to be part of that process is really something that excites me. So I appreciate the mayor for nominating me and I am looking forward to serving.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Counselor Hausman has a number of other questions he would like to ask you this evening.
We had a good conversation the last time. I've actually been trying to do some research to follow up from that one, so that'll be a long process.
Yeah, no questions, Council President. I just want to, you know, report to the council, Legal Affairs actually had the first, maybe the only subcommittee meeting since the pandemic started that we met last week and had a very informative and, you know, really good conversation with Mr. Sweeney. I think he'll make a terrific addition to the Planning Department. And it was, it was nice to actually have a subcommittee meeting, believe it or not. And anyway, I hardly, you know, endorse, you know, this nomination. I think he'll do a terrific job on the Planning Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hausman. Counselor Copeland?
Yes, I wanted to say the same thing, echo Counselor Hausman. It was great to have an actual meeting of the Subcommittee. I thought that was fantastic. And Mr. Sweeney, I've spoken to actually a few times now. The first time we spoke, it was in regards to service and giving back and making a difference. So glad to see him here in that, in that role and to have an opportunity to do so. We definitely need more of that here in Beverly, especially from, I won't say the youth, but from, I guess, the younger professionals that are coming along. So I'm glad to see it and I feel good that the future of our city is in good hands with individuals such as himself coming along that are talented and have a good heart and their minds and hearts are in the right place as well. So I endorse him also.
Thank you, Counselor Copeland. Brendan, you know, the Planning Board meetings are longer than City Council meetings.
I'm prepared. Yeah, this is a good way to get used to it, then.
Yeah, prepare.
I'm excited.
Prepare your fiancee, too.
Yeah, she knows, she knows it's a joint effort we're signing up for here.
And make sure that you get to the mail when your check gets mailed, you get it before she does, okay? Oh, thank you. We've had a couple of great conversations. Look forward to seeing you perform not only on the Cable TV Advisory Committee, but also on the Planning Board. And you know, to reach out to any one of us if you have any questions and need any help, please. I would entertain a motion to approve the appointment.
So move.
Second.
Second. King?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman? Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Retundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. Next.
Order number 39, reappointment for Constable from Mr. Jonathan Cassidy.
Any questions or comments? I would entertain a motion to approve Mr. Cassidy's license.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Retundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. Mr. Cassidy, nice kid, very young professional, St. John's Prep grad, and he works for a local company here in Beverly also. So in lives, obviously, in Beverly. We have one more out of committee, correct, Ms. Kent?
Yes.
Okay.
Order number 42 for the appointment for Mr. Kevin Ascalilo.
Ascalilo.
To serve as a member of Beverly Housing Authority.
There goes another Italian name you butchered.
I wrote it down.
All right, reappointment. I would entertain a motion to approve the reappointment.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Retundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. That's all we have tonight. Great meeting team. We had a lot of, a lot of things to do tonight. I think for the most part, we stayed on subject. No, no. Council Ames? Go ahead, because I want to have the last word.
Okay. I'm sorry. So number one, I just have to say Mrs. Barrett would never like, let me get off the call without saying that the Beverly Education Foundation grants are open now. So you can look online at BEV Ed and figure out their parent teacher grants, $500 to $1,000. It is Women's History Month. There are two great programs at Beverly Historical Society, one online about a sculptor, Joanna Quiner, and then a walking tour this weekend, Witches and Bitches, the bad, the Badasses of Beverly. So that's all I got. Thanks.
That's great. Good information. Thank you to Mayor Cahill and his entire team for being here to answer questions and explain a lot of things to us. Does anybody have anything else to add before I ask for a motion to adjourn? Our next meeting will be on Monday, March 15th. Look forward to seeing everybody there. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Ames?
That was a little angry, Council Retundo.
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
You'll have to work tomorrow.
Yes.
Yes. Flowers?
Yes.
Hausman?
Oh, yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Retundo?
No. Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. Thank you, everybody. Great job.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Everybody watching at home.
Thank you.